It being six o'clock, I will hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for October 4th, 2023. Who's in the back? Sherry?
Yep.
Oh, hi. Hi, Sherry. Would you call roll, please?
Chair Quilce?
Here.
Vice Chair Trent? Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Bennett not here yet.
Not here yet. Right, okay. Pledge of allegiance, if Commissioner Murphy, if you lead us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Judy. Any corrections to the agenda, Lucas?
No.
Okay. Next, we have public communications, the time set aside during the planning commission for citizens to address the public, the, excuse me, the planning commission on city business items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone here wishing to speak in public communications? Seeing none, Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room?
No.
Very good. We'll move on. The discussion item number one is...
There are no minutes to be reviewed?
Not yet.
Okay.
The minutes of the last meeting will be here at the next meeting.
Okay.
I'm presuming. Discussion item, housing laws and regulations presentation, Lucas?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon. So, what we have before us tonight is a discussion item, no decisions being made. It is, it is informational. We have a PowerPoint presentation that we'll be providing here in a moment, and we have counsel here tonight that'll be doing, that'll be walking us through the presentation, and from what I understand, it'll also be somewhat interactive as we work through this. Before I pull up the slide deck and we start going through it, I just wanted to read a little bio on Alex, just so that we all kind of get the sense of who he is as a professional and what he brings to the table for discussion tonight.
Things that, that he's too, too shy to tell us about himself?
Yeah, so he won't, someone else has, a third party has to do it, so I've graciously identified myself. So Alex is senior counsel to the firm, which is Calentino High School and Watley, which is a member of the municipal practice group located in Pasadena. He serves as city attorney to the city of Sierra Madre currently. As a public agency attorney, Alex is skilled in the Brown Act, Public Records Act, and Conflict of Interest laws. He specializes in housing, land use, and election law. Alex is passionate about teaching, and I think you'll hear that tonight. He's spoken at a number of conferences, including at the League of California Cities Annual Conference and the Planning Commissioners Academy. He also presented as part of a Cal Cities Legal Practicum, which had a housing series. His classes cover a diverse range of subjects, from processing residential development applications to AB-1234 Ethics Training on Sexual Harassment Prevention Training. So with that, I know Alex, you're gonna start, and I'll pull up the slide deck. Is there anything else you wanted to add that maybe I forgot or didn't, didn't include?
I think this is also a sequel to his last performance here. Thank you.
Alex, are you going to be making the slide deck available to us?
Yes.
At some point?
Yes.
So it's not Alex that's gonna be making it available? It's gonna be the, I, I have it, and it's certainly available for anybody that, that inquires or would like to have it?
Or you could post it on the city website, and we could all get to it.
That could be done as well. Any number of ways, certainly.
Well, I want to know what Alex hasn't done.
What a great way to start this presentation.
No pressure.
So thank you, Lucas, for that introduction. My name is Alex Giragosian. As he said, I serve as city attorney for the city of Sierra Madre, and I am your deputy city attorney. You can go to the next slide. Just, just as a, by, by way of background, we'll be covering four different laws today. The density bonus law, which isn't a new law, but it's been amended quite a bit. SB 35, which is new-ish. The Housing Accountability Act, which again, isn't a new law, but it's been given teeth since 2017, and the Housing Crisis Act of 2019, which is a new law. So, I want to provide the perspective over at the state legislator, because it's important, because it informs all these new laws that are coming along. So, the state of California has declared that we're in a housing crisis. Here are the facts that they're operating under. First, according to the state, they're claiming there's a housing deficit of 2 million units. Second, according to HCD, the housing units needed to maintain median cost of housing is 180,000 units per year, new units that we need to create per year. What we're actually producing in California is something like 80,000 units per year over the past 10 years. Overall, homeownership rates have fallen to their lowest rate since the 1940s, and the state has identified five impediments. Land, so that there needs to be available space, labor to build those homes, the materials that often come from abroad, the capital, so the financing, and regulatory approvals. And the state has chosen to focus on regulatory approvals. Now, the state's options are limited. As, as you all know, in order to, to get that happy balance, there needs to be a market equilibrium in the demand and the supply of housing. So now, just looking at this chart, looking at this table over here, the state has some command and control options. Means, command and control is the state goes in and does it itself, right? So, supply of housing, the state could certainly build housing and can build affordable housing. The problem is, for the state, is that the California voters, oh, getting some feedback. The, the California voters adopted, oh, you, we can mute that, because that sounds not gonna go away.
Just turn the volume off, Bill. That's right.
So as I was saying, the voters in, in the 1950s adopted an initiative to change the California Constitution. Article 29 of the, of the California Constitution prohibits the construction of low-income rental housing without voter approval, which basically kills almost all low, low-income rental housing in California. So the state really can't build affordable housing on, even on state sites that are located in cities.
It bans state building of affordable housing.
And local governments.
And lo, yeah, okay, government building.
Government, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The federal government's not subject to this limitation, but, but state and local governments are. So the state's hands are kind of tied when it comes to supply. Now, what about demand? To limit demand, the state hypothetically could prohibit domestic and international immigration, except for the fact that the United States Constitution, specifically the Fifth Amendment, guarantees our right to travel, and so states can't prohibit other people from coming into our state. California just can't do it. So we, so we have some limitations, the state has some limitations regarding limiting demand. Now, what about these market-based regulations? That's what the state's really relying on. With respect to the supply of housing, one option is to reduce the cost to build housing by removing market constraints. The market constraint that the state is focusing on now is our regulatory approvals. Another option is to allow prices to increase, which the state is also doing, which is what we're experiencing. And that's, and that, and that increase in price is supposedly supposed to decrease demand, but unfortunately, we're not really seeing that in California to the extent we need to. Some of the alternatives include price controls for housing inputs, right? So controlling the price of land, labor, and capital. State's not doing that. Or purchases in rental price. We do have some limitations, we do have some regulations on rental price, specifically rent stabilization laws that were passed. I heard from Matt that the city actually adopted a rent stabilization ordinance. So, those are some steps that can be taken. Another option is increasing purchasing power through lowering taxes or increasing subsidies. So that's something the state's also exploring. Next slide.
Tough during a year when there's a multi-tens-of-billion-dollar deficits at the state level.
When there are deficits, that is a difficult thing to do, yes. So limiting the state's authority under the zoning law. So, the state has somewhat upended our local regulatory approval process and, and our zoning authority. Now, let me go through what the elements of a zoning code are, and I'll show you how the state's kind of stripped us of some of these individual powers. So first, city can set zones, right? So the city determines this zone is residential, that zone is commercial, that zone's industrial. Well, the housing element law requires more zoning for housing now at the expense of commercial or industrial. So it's not simply the case that you can say, this is commercial, this is industrial. The state is saying, you have to increase your supply of residentially designated zones. Also, the state's saying that certain developments, like residential developments, are now permitted in commercial zones. So it's kind of undoing this zone distinction.
Question. Is there some sort of, oh, yeah. Is there some sort of percentage that they're looking for? Like a standard percentage, like?
Yes.
10% residential, 10% industrial?
It's, it's not so much that, but it's more, it's more based on your arena numbers, and I think you all went through that cycle already, just recently. So, every state, every city has allocated a certain number of their regional housing needs allocation, and then you'll have to meet that. But that number is, has been increasing, and as that number increases, your zones for residential and commercial either have to get smaller, or your residential zones need to have more density.
Got it. Okay, okay.
To accommodate that increasing regional allocation.
Either density, or we encroach on commercial and industrial.
Right.
But you, you said that the state is now requiring that cities allow residential use of commercial property and industrial property?
In, in, in specific circumstances. We're not, we're not really gonna get into it in this presentation, because it's outside the scope, but there are certain type of affordable, affordable developments that are now permitted by right in commercial zones.
Okay. How about agricultural zones?
Agricultural zones are still protected, so no.
And you said, but of affordable housing, not just any sort of housing?
Affordable housing, correct.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
Could, like, from an affordable housing standpoint, is it a minimum percentage, like a 20% minimum cap?
They're...
That qualifies for affordable?
Yeah, and I'll be getting into that.
Okay, perfect.
Great.
Next is our uses. So every zoning code has zones, and then in those zones, you identify what those uses are. Uses can be permitted, conditionally permitted, or not permitted. Again, the state has said that certain types of projects are permitted by right. So you don't have, you don't, they're not conditionally permitted anymore, they're permitted, and the city doesn't have a say in whether or not to conditionally permit them or...
So we need to update our land use tables?
And I believe they've already been updated, is my understanding.
Some.
Perhaps, for certain developments.
And more specifically, I mean, our housing element identifies those areas where there needs to be work. Those 19 programs, some of those programs cover that.
And so like, an example would be transitional housing or supportive housing. Some of those types of housing, they're, they're permitted by right in residential areas, whereas before, they were, they were approved conditionally, so the commission would have discretion. Now the commission doesn't have discretion.
This is all under the umbrella of special needs housing?
Yeah, and that's just one type.
Right, okay.
Next. Your zoning code also has development standards, height, setback, lot coverage, et cetera. A lot of those resident, all those development standards, a lot of them, through the density bonus law, are waived. And, and we'll get into how they're waived and how you have to make concessions. And regulatory procedures. So your regulatory procedures, every code lists how, how ministerial approval, what the ministerial approval process is, what the discretionary approval process is, how much time you, you can take to, to process an application, how many meetings you get, you can, these are all spelled out usually in codes, and the legislator has said with, with respect to certain projects, we're spelling out what the, what the regulatory process is going to be. So for example, your ADU applications, the legislator has said, those are ministerially approved now, not discretionary. So this, this body doesn't review ADUs. It's, it's reviewed by staff, and staff has to review that within a certain number of days, or else the application's automatically approved, for example. Next slide. So the state has passed a number of laws here. These are all within the past five years. I'm just gonna talk about the, the four highlighted, the first four that are, that are highlighted. Next slide. So let's begin with the density bonus law, which I think is among the more complex laws, and stop me at any point if this gets confusing. So the, there are four primary benefits to the developer under the density bonus law. First is what they call a density bonus, which is basically more units per acre. The second are these things called incentives or concessions, which, which I'll get into what they are. The third are waivers of certain development standards when, when findings are met. And the third, and the fourth are preferential parking standards. I'll get into each of these next. But before I do, again, I want to provide the perspective of the state, so you understand where the state is coming from. Now, this is a slide that came directly from HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. HCD had put this slide together for all public elected officials at the California League of Cities Conference that we just had. Now, if you don't mind, if I could have two volunteers just to read off what, what's being said here, if you two gentlemen wouldn't mind, if you don't mind reading the light blue and then you, reading the dark blue?
Sure.
Hey, wouldn't it be cool if there were a way to build a brand-new, deed-restricted, affordable housing without any government subsidy?
Of course, but that's impossible.
Imagine if a developer could make a trade with the city. The developer chooses to add affordable units to their project and is rewarded by being allowed to build more market-rate units than they would otherwise be allowed. Well, the two sides balance out, and the development stays economically feasible.
Well, that's wild. But what about all the development standards? More units equal bigger, how, bigger buildings. How would the bigger building meet development standards like building heights and setbacks?
The developer will be able to go and bend and break some of the development standards to make the project possible.
Smart.
Thanks. Thank you for that recitation. It was wonderful. Next slide. So I mean, that gives you a sense of what, how the state's thinking about this. So, who's eligible for a density bonus, if you don't mind just clicking through these? First, the developer has to ask for it. It's not something that they just get automatically. The developer has to request the density bonus, and the housing development project that they're requesting it for needs to be five units of residential housing or more. It needs to be either in a mixed-use or residential zone. They have to agree to record a 55-year affordability covenant on those units that are going to be affordable. They need to construct a threshold number of affordable senior qualifying housing in order to get that density bonus, or they can donate land for affordable housing, because land's in short supply, and the state's also looking for available land.
55 years, but I've also seen 45 years?
It was, so it was 45 years, I believe, for rental, and then 55 years for, for sale, or it could have been the other way around. But I think what, in the last round of edits to the density bonus law, by the way, which has been amended something like 30 times, they, they've, I think they've made it all 55 years now, if I'm not mistaken, across the board. SB 35 still keeps that, which I'll get into later, keeps that 45-55 distinction, but, but in the density bonus law, I think it's across the board 55. Now, questions?
John, sorry. To construct a threshold number of affordable senior qualifying, what is that threshold number?
Pass the next slide, sir. You're anticipating the slide.
Okay.
And then I have a follow-up to that. It says, either construct some number of affordable housing or qualifying housing, or donate land. Does that mean that a developer could take, say, three acres, build some number of market-rate houses on it, and then donate some portion of that land to the city, and that qualifies for the density bonus?
I believe that's right.
Okay.
Sorry, follow-up question to that. On the donation of land, does it have to be for affordable housing?
Yes.
It does?
Well, if it's, if it's donated, who builds the affordable housing?
I'd have to, I believe they're on the hook for funding it, I believe, and I, this presentation doesn't get into it, so I haven't reviewed the law with respect to the donation of land, but I believe the developer is still on the hook for financing some of that.
Doesn't sound like they're really donating the land. They're building something on it and then donating it?
No, they're not, they won't be, they...
Oh, they own the land, they're just...
They own the land. They'll be, they'll be donating it, and I, I think, I don't want to, I don't want to confuse the record here. I'd have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I'd have to review the law on that donation aspect.
Because up now, nobody's been required to build any.
Yeah, yeah. It's not, that donation option isn't something that comes up often. I personally never seen it in my practice. Yeah. Next slide. Okay, so minimum eligibility thresholds. We have, so if the development is at least 5%, 5% of the units are for rental or sale for very low-income households, then they qualify for a density bonus. These are minimum thresholds. They, there can be, they can be high, they can have a higher percentage of affordable. This is the minimum to qualify. So 5% at very low income, 10% at low income, 10% at moderate income, 50, this is not, there's no percentage here, but if you built market-rate senior citizen housing with at least 35 dwellings, you qualify for density bonus. And then 10% for low-income transitional foster youth, disabled veterans, 20% of the units are for lower-income student housing. The last two are kind of rare. The first four are what you see most often in cities.
Question.
Sir?
On your second bullet, it says lower income. And, and we've, we've seen this as we've gone through our, our planning and zoning ordinances. Lower sometimes means low, and sometimes it means low, very low, or exceptionally low.
You're right.
Which one does that mean?
Low. And unfortunately, sometimes the law uses, uses those terms interchangeably, and I made the mistake of using interchangeably here, because it's confusing. I agree.
Okay, that is low, then?
Low.
So 5% to very low, 10% to low?
Right.
Okay, and exceptionally low doesn't come into this calculus?
No.
Okay.
Is that a cumulative situation where they have to meet those thresholds at each level?
No.
Just one of them?
Just one.
Any one of them?
Correct.
Okay.
Right.
So it could be 10% moderate and 90% market rate, and that qualifies for a density bonus?
Yeah, and I'm gonna talk about how this math works. I'm gonna provide an example. So just to put numbers on this, and looking at Ventura County, which I was surprised has a really high median income, unusually high. I think you're number three out of all the counties in the state, just below Santa Clara and some other Bay Area county.
1,000 Oaks.
I was shocked. Anyway, for a family of four, you can see what these thresholds are. These, these are the, these are the upper thresholds. The 39,000 qualifies as extremely low. In LA County, that's something like 25,000 or something. So it's, it's a lot higher in Ventura County.
Because it's all percentages of the median.
Percentages of the median, that's right. And what does that translate to for, for purposes of rental caps? So if you, because if you're gonna say, this unit is affordable to, if it's a rental unit, and you're gonna say it's affordable to a very low-income household, well, in order for that family to qualify, they need to be making something like $66,400 or less annually. And then their rent will be capped at $1,543 per month, and there's going...
Because those numbers will always change.
Those numbers will change, yeah. There'll be, there'll be an inflation factor, but, but that's what the cap's gonna be for 55 years, subject to, you know, whatever cost index they're gonna link inflation to.
So they have to qualify for these numbers based on the build date? So when they're building it, and they qualify, they, they qualify for these dates, and then that, that rent is locked in for 55 years regardless of the income increases?
No, no, the, so once, once the, so once the thing is built?
Yeah.
Or right before it's built, before we issue them a certificate of completion, they're gonna have to record an affordability covenant?
Right.
Once they record that affordability covenant, they're issued a certificate of completion, I'm not really sure how Ventura County does it or how the city does it, but in, in, in my practice, what I've seen is there's a, there's basically a lottery. And then they, they pool all these people based on what their income is, and then they'll, they'll pull out people that meet, so like, let's say the development had an affordability covenant for very low-income households. They'll figure out who in this pool is very low-income. They'll hold a lottery for those people, notify them that you've been selected, and then their first year will be 1,543, but then it'll be adjusted for whatever the inflation is.
Got it. So it's based on inflation, it's not based on what the...
There, there is an adjustment factor, yeah. I don't exactly remember what the adjustment factor is, but there is an adjustment factor there.
It's all, it's all keyed from the median income.
That's all tied to the median income?
All the income levels are percentages of the median income.
No, I get it, but...
And then the rent is like 30% of that.
And this doesn't include utilities?
If the median income increases faster than inflation, do we count?
Oh, these numbers, sorry. Correction to what I said earlier. These numbers are adjusted annually, correct, for inflation, but the num, the people who are adjusting these numbers, H, the state's adjusting these numbers. So every year, HCD will adjust the median income, and there'll be a new one, and then that'll trigger a new set of max rents per whatever the new median is, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I guess I'm just trying to figure out how their, how the median increases. Is it based on like statistical surveys?
There's, there's a formula. There's, there's a formula for it, and I, and I don't know the formula.
Right, got it. And then, and then the other question is, once they're locked in at that, the 1543, that's, outside of inflation, that's locked in for 55 years?
No, 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 for that year.
For that year.
And then, and then HCD will issue a new median?
Right.
Which will trigger a new calculation for max rent for that next year?
Got it.
Every single year, these numbers are updated.
So if I'm a renter, and I'm getting, and I'm paying 1543 next year, I could have an increase in my rent?
Yes, or if the median goes down, you pay less.
I pay less if the median, okay, I got you. All right.
Does it ever go down?
All the rest of the table will populate.
Right, so it's adjusted every year?
Right.
Got it, okay.
In the eight, 10 years that I've been following this, I don't know that I've ever seen the median go down, just to be fair.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's pretty rare.
However, during the housing bubble, I think there was an adjustment then. That was around 2008.
Possibly. I wasn't practicing law back then. I don't know.
Can, can we go back to the, the table before this one? Because this is, this is just one element of how you can qualify, and it's not the only one, is that right? Or do you have to, you have to?
This, this is, this is how you qualify for the density bonus, so...
Oh, I see, for the density bonus.
Right, yeah. So to get the density bonus, a certain number of your units have to be affordable to these categories.
Right.
One of these categories.
One of these categories.
Very low and low, it said on the previous chart.
Yeah, there is no, I just added extremely low there, so you guys have a sense of it, but there is no extremely low for purposes of density bonus law. It's just very low, low, moderate.
Got it. Okay.
Next slide. Okay, so here are those thresholds. If 5% of the base density is affordable to very low-income households, right, that first row, then you get a 20% density bonus. Just to, just to put some math on this, so we, so we know what it looks like. The first distinction you need to make is between base density and density bonus. So base density, the project without the bonus, the project has 20 units. If the project has 20 units, 5% would be one. So if, if you have 20 units, and one of those units is affordable, you qualify to, to a very low-income household, you qualify for a density bonus. And your density bonus can be 20%. So 20%... You qualify for a density bonus, and your density bonus can be twenty percent, so twenty percent of twenty is four. So you get now, if you have twenty ba- twenty base density, twenty base units, you get an extra four. Your whole project can be up to twenty-four units, that's how density bonus works.
So instead of building twenty market rate units, you can now build twenty-three market rate units and one very low unit.
Exactly, and, and the idea is, the benefit you receive from those additional three units should cover the cost of the affordable unit.
Okay, got it.
But according to the little, um, morality play that we did earlier. Those four units. If, if you can't build them without the, the density bonus. Because the property is already maxed out in terms of setbacks and heights and all the rest of it, it's taking up all the volume required. Does, and, and as I remember the way in which that morality play played out. It said that the developer would be able to, um, break with zoning. And submit a proposal which did not adhere to the way in which a neighborhood was zoned. It, it could, it could, you know, in either height, width, depth, whatever. Uh, it could exceed that in order to achieve the twenty percent density bonus.
So, so let the record show that I did not share this presentation with any of the commissioners, but they're anticipating all of my future slides. I think that's literally the next slide. Yeah, I'm gonna get into that next.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so, so there's, I'm not gonna get into all these thresholds, it's, you know, just the math, but we understand basically how this works, okay, great, next slide.
We have a similar table in the code.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Numbers, but a similar type.
Yeah, yeah.
You can always be more generous, you can't be less generous, the government establishes the floor, not the ceiling. Okay, so, so I, I mentioned earlier that, or the commissioner next to me mentioned. That, hey, you can bend some of these rules, I hear, or you can bend some, or you can break some of these rules. First way you do it is through incentives or concessions, so there are three types, here's the first one. A reduction in site development standards or modifications of the zoning code or zoning code or architectural design requirements. That result in identifiable and actual cost reductions, that's a mouthful. Basically, what they're saying is, if you get a density bonus, depending on how many affordable units you build. You get one, two, three, or four incentives or concessions. One of those can be a reduction in site development standards like height, so if they, they say height is two stories. If you have an incentive or concession to use, you can make that three stories, for example.
And who picks which concession?
Developer.
Okay.
And then, so there are two others here to go through, next is approval of mixed, mixed zoning, mixed use zoning. In conjunction with the housing project, if the inclusion of commercial, office, or industrial use will reduce the cost of the housing project. And such non-residential uses are compatible with the housing project and existing and planned development in the area. Happens, sometimes in a, in a, if, if the, if the site's designated residential. Sometimes they'll try to push commercial into that on the bottom floor in order for the commercial rents to cover the cost of the affordable unit. Next slide, next.
The other way around, though.
Uh, yes.
You can push residential into a commercially zoned.
Oh, no, 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 density bonus only works, density bonus only works in residential areas.
How about SPL overlay?
Oh, that's interesting.
Overlay.
Yeah, so your overlay, if your overlay kicks in, then yes, it would work.
Okay.
Yeah, next, and so the third option is other regulatory, so this is not a, they wanna make it clear, this is not an exclusive list. Other regulatory incentives or concessions proposed by the local agency or the developer. That result in identifiable and actual cost reductions to provide for affordable housing costs or rents. So cities often require applicants for incentives and concessions to submit in their application ahead of time. What types of incentives and concessions they're asking for, and then, uh, traditionally. We've also requested them to provide us, uh, pro forma to, to demonstrate that. If we give this to you, it's actually gonna result in cost reductions to make your project feasible, uh, so this, this isn't intended to be. Well, incentives and concessions generally, they can take use of, but, make use of, but what you'll see next are waivers and these, well, let me save that. Let's go to the waivers and, and I'll talk about what the waivers are.
Can I ask a follow up?
Oh, yeah, sure.
So incentives, concessions.
Used interchangeably.
Interchangeably, right?
Yeah.
If you're looking at one, you're looking at both.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, but you, but you said the developer names the incentive or concession.
Right.
And if, if by the objective numbers of whatever's being built and what is being deed restricted. The developer gets one, two, three, or four of these things, and then it's the developer's choice. Which one, two, three, or four incentives or concessions they get, and there's no negotiation with the local agency.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and I apologize, you might have covered this, but, um, can they apply for all four, or do they have to hit certain thresholds?
Depends, depends on how much affordability.
Next slide.
Is in the project, I'll betcha.
There, there, there you go, there you have it. We're gonna be doing this all night. Yeah, so for very low income, you see the max out there, so if, if they get fifteen percent very low income, they get three incentives and concessions. If the project goes full affordable, they have four.
There you've got lower income again, which, which lower is that?
Do I have lower income, I said, it says low, doesn't it?
Bottom line.
Oh, I see, fully affordable project for, oh, in, in this case, it is lower as you understand it, low or very low.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
But it could be, it could be eighty percent low.
It could be eighty percent low, it could be eighty percent very low, and of course, if you can get eighty percent low, which yields a higher rent. Why would you ever do eighty percent very low?
Yeah.
Yeah. Next slide. Okay, waivers, this one is a thorn in my side, next slide, or next, uh, point. Uh, so here's what waivers are about, it says. If compliance with a development standard would physically preclude construction of a housing development. Utilizing the density bonus and concessions and incentives, meaning if they get their density bonus and they get all the concessions and incentives they're entitled to. And still the developer claims that they can't build their development affordably. They can apply for these waivers of development standards, so if you click once more through it. Here's the problem, there is no maximum limit on the number of waivers an applicant can request. So, so the struggle we have, the city attorney's offices, making sure that they're not totally taking advantage of this provision. To build whatever they want, and the way we generally do that is we, we make them demonstrate to us. That in fact, you can't build this with, you can't build this without your waiver, and that your waiver is actually resulting in some kind of. Um, cost reduction, cause this isn't intended to be another bonus for you, it's intended to, eh, per the code, uh, per the statute. It's intended to make this feasible, because without it, it wouldn't be feasible, if it's feasible without it, you're not getting a waiver. But this is, this is the most difficult, this is where the litigation happens, this, this is the most difficult issue we encounter. And it's, it's the area with the most gray.
Requires the developers to open the books.
Yes, we ask them to send a pro, pro forma usually, but this, but the, the court has been. Cracking down on our ability to request documentation from them, so it's, it's been a difficult fight, uh, with respect to these waivers. Excellent. Uh, when I say waivers of development standards, and this is, this isn't an exclusive list, but, you know, just to get an idea. High parking ratio setback, now I put density up there on purpose because it is a development standard, but. You don't get a waiver or a density when you've already got a density bonus, yeah, you can't double dip. So that's really the only thing they, we totally prohibit them from waving and developers really haven't fought us on that one.
Well, we've, we've heard from citizens, even from one commissioner in the past. That a height limitation is an impediment.
Mm-hmm, that's what they, that's what.
And therefore not objective.
Okay, so you use, you use the term objective, which, uh, which does, has.
Objective doesn't just mean there's a number there.
Yeah, yeah. I guess I made a mistake here because I included objective development standards, cause that's just how I think about them.
Sure.
Because of all the different laws, but the, but the density bonus law doesn't really talk about objective development standards. We'll get into that when I talk about Housing Accountability Act and Housing Crisis Act, which does define for us. The, what a, what an objective development standard is.
Okay, good, yeah, cause objective and subjective, for me at least, right now. Are two pretty squishy words.
Yeah, and, and we'll clarify that.
Good.
So, question on, on the waivers of these, cause obviously we've got, we've got these in our development standards.
Yeah.
So when you waive one, like for example, the height limitation, is there a maximum that they can go, or can they go as high as they want?
Yeah, unfortunately, the law doesn't make this point clear, and this is a constant source of just confrontation between us and developers.
I would say, yeah, probably across the state.
Well, it's been, it's been in the newspaper that.
For sure.
Somebody wanted to build a, I think it was a three-story apartment building down in Ventura.
Yeah, they're going through it right now.
City said no, so the developer turned around and said, okay, well then, I'm gonna build an eight-story building and you can't stop me.
Yep.
It's a, it's a constant struggle, and, and, and it's, unfortunately, it's because the waiver section is just not clear in, under state law.
Yeah.
And so it's constantly leading to that, whereas the density bonus, that's easy, that's a straight formula, we know what to give them, they know what to receive. Easy, concessions, incentives, a little trickier, but again, there's a formula there, we know what to give them, the waivers is, is just a challenge.
What is the process on, on all of that? They would co- a, a developer would come to the community development director and lay out his proposal. And let's say the community development director and the, and the developer disagree about the height. Then, do they go to court, uh, when do you come into it?
So.
Who, how?
Yeah, we, I mean, I don't wanna speak for you, do you, do you wanna, do you wanna take this one, or should I tell you, should I say what I, what I generally? Okay, so, so generally, their application needs to state what the base density is, how many affordable units they're getting. And then we tell them what their density bonus is, we do that calculation. We also tell them how many incentives and concessions they're entitled to, then they tell us on that same form. What incentives and concessions they want, if, and sometimes they don't, believe it or not, developers don't always use all their incentives and concessions. Uh, that they're entitled to, so they tell us which ones they want. If they're gonna get a waiver, they have to tell us why on the form, there, there is, the way I handle it. There is no telling us after the fact, if your application is deemed complete, that's it, done deal, this is what you're submitting. And there, there are no changes, you wanna, you wanna change it, submit a new application, so, so we know what the waivers are, we fight.
To have to come to a decision.
Once, once the application is determined to be complete, correct, so, so I get an, if it's a den- density bonus application. And there's a conflict regarding the waivers, which is usually what the issue is, uh, they'll bring me in right at the application phase before. You know, there's even a solid plan yet.
So real quick clarifying question, I apologize, yeah, I know you covered this already, so there's no limit on the number of waivers, so theoretically.
That can be asked for.
It could be asked for, so theoretically, the, the developer could ask for all of these. And literally build a rectangle box straight up, complete, you know, fill the lot size, have no parking, and go like seven stories. A giant box.
More taller.
More taller.
Hi, hi- hypothetically, yes, but there are like practical limitations to building something like this.
Right.
But hypothetically, yeah.
And does that apply?
We could have a skys- they could build a skyscraper if they wanted to, basically.
I don't, I don't wanna say yes, because there, there are like, there actually are real limitations to their ability to, to build some of these things, but. But yeah, they can, they can request this, and then we'll work with the applicant to, to let them know what the actual limitations on the ground are, and that would prevent them from building something like this.
You'd have, you'd have to do some soil testing and things to.
I mean, there's all kinds of stuff.
How tall a building could actually sit on that ground.
Yeah.
But. With the waivers, though, the waivers are a point of negotiation between the developer.
That's a back and forth.
Agency, but does either one have to give on any of them?
The laws are written in favor of the developer, so, but do we have to give on it? No, but can they sue us if we don't give, claiming that they're, they're.
Could always sue us, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you can't come to agreement, it, it goes to court.
Uh, on the waiver issue, and yeah, if we can't come to agreement and the developer's not willing to give, yeah, court, most likely.
From a processing standpoint, that wouldn't be at the director level, that would, that would be at some sort of a public hearing level. Where there's a determination made, correct?
Yeah, because there's a general legal principle that you can't sue the city unless you've exhausted administrative remedies. So they'd have to go through the whole process and be issued a denial, and then appeal a denial, and then be denied at the city council before they can even sue the city.
Appeal his decision to us and appeal our decision to the city council.
I, I don't believe, you're, you're not issuing a final decision on development on a density bonuses, are you? That would be the planning commission would make that decision in, in, in the, for the whole project, that'd be like, well, go ahead.
Uh, yes, and that's, that we're, I, I think it would probably be framed within the, like, for instance, a design review permit.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Next slide. Uh, parking ratios, so the last benefit they get, uh, are special parking ratios. So every city has, usually has a parking ratio, certain number, and it's usually tied to number of, uh, bedrooms. Um, and so, under the state law, they get this schedule. Of, uh, parking per bedroom. Now, what the, according to state legislation, I looked at their legislative history to figure out. Like why they're doing this, what are they thinking when they're creating a parking schedule like this, cause this, this generally underparks the community. Uh, and the legis- according to legislative, these are their numbers. For above-ground parking, the, to build it, the space is usually costing the developer about twenty-four thousand dollars per space. And for subterranean underground parking, it's about thirty-four thousand dollars per space. So in their minds, they're saving the developer, you know, thirty-four thousand dollars. If, if it was reduced, let's say you're, let's say for a moment your municipal code for a two-to-three-bedroom unit. Said you have to have two car- parking spaces. If it says that and they've shaved it down to one, they just saved the developer for above-ground parking twenty-four thousand dollars per unit. Which can add up, if, if those numbers are accurate.
Yeah, and they put that second car out on city streets somewhere.
Yep, exactly, yep.
But we pay for it just in a different way.
Right, yeah.
The city pays for it.
The numbers that you just said there, I thought were somewhat interesting in terms of the number, the, the dollar amount for surface parking. Versus a dollar amount that the state has identified versus subterranean parking, I thought that number would be much larger.
I, I, I thought so too, but I took it from AB seven forty-four versus.
And also, that's very, uh, it's very abstract, cause I mean, they're looking at the price of that parking spot. The land of that parking spot, which in like, you know, Malibu is gonna be a lot different than Bakersfield. Bakersfield is gonna be pretty, you know, affordable, and then Malibu is gonna be more expensive, so you can't say they're all twenty-five thousand, that's.
And I'm just, I'm just using the facts they're operating under.
Depends a lot on how many subterranean spaces you make.
Right.
I wonder if that's an average, it's gotta be an average.
I don't know, I ju- I just took that number straight from the legislative history.
Yeah, I, I believe that it's a, actually a lot more expensive to do it, depends on how much you have to spend on the land. If you get, if you have the land for free and it's just a question of construction, I would think that thirty-four thousand. Isn't adequate to build a subterranean parking space and put a concrete ceiling on it. So that the, whatever it's beneath is, doesn't fall down, um, that's, that's.
Again, it, it depends on whether you're making two subterranean parking spaces or forty. Building forty's gonna bring that average down.
Some, it costs per square foot though, to, to build, is what it is.
This is an interesting number.
Those, I just wanna share the facts that they're using, so we're, we all understand where they're coming from, next slide.
If, if I can, and this are, this is an observation and not a. If if I can, and this are, this is an observation and not a question, but what it does is. Um, and I just wanna know whether I've got it right. This set of rules, um, and you, I'm sure we'll see more evidence of that. Really diminishes the importance of zoning for the creation of a built environment. Because the person who's building the environment, who owns the land and can do the project, has has just been granted. Um, or maybe, maybe granted if they are willing to accommodate additional housing. Uh, something which could be very disruptive to a community. In terms of its current, you know, all those other things that we look at in our zoning and we say, well, gee, you know, is is it, is this. Consistent with the the environment that that, that that house is in on the block it's in. And, you know, we're looking at measures like that, it it all gets thrown um for a loop. If if somebody comes in and says, I'm gonna do something for um very low-income housing and I'm gonna. I'm I'm gonna check the boxes and essentially get all these entitlements to build whatever.
Right, yeah, I think, I think the density bonus law is the big, is is the biggest hit to the city's zoning code. The biggest hit to your discretionary approvals comes in other laws, but to your zoning code, it's it's the density bonus, pretty powerful.
Um, yeah, there's, there's a key phrase in most of the stuff toward the bottom of the table there. Major transit stop.
Right.
There is not one in Ojai.
Correct, this is what Matt tells me.
You have to poke through health and safety and government and public resources code to figure out what that means. But we don't have one.
Right.
And we don't have a bus route operating at least eight times a day, as far as I know. The trolley doesn't qualify. The only thing that would qualify is the bus that runs down to to Ventura. And I don't believe that goes eight times a day. So what we have to worry about is the top, the top part of this table.
Well, also the very bottom one, rental projects for supportive housing, hundred percent affordable.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that one, I don't really know.
And and, yeah, Alex.
I don't wanna opine on it cuz I'm not sure about that specific definition.
Alex, the the bottom line talks about supportive housing. Clearly, that's a key, that's a special phrase, but what does it mean?
Well, I happen to have the statute open now, so.
All right.
Definitions.
Uh, supportive housing development as defined by this health and safety code provision, so let me go there.
Yep.
And. Supportive housing means housing with no limit on length of stay that is occupied by the target population. And that is linked to onsite or offsite services that is assist the supportive housing resident in retaining the housing. Improving their health status and maximizing their ability to live and, when possible, work in the community. So this is often, this often has to do with people with um who are experiencing homelessness.
Transitional?
It it can, it can, it's not, it's not transitional housing, it's it's different, um, so, but supportive housing. Uh, u- usually comes in the context of people experiencing homelessness.
But i- it's not financially based.
No, no.
Okay.
Sorry. Uh, there probably is a limit, it says no limit on length of stay, alright.
Transitional housing typically has the intent, at least, I think, of people being there for. For a temporary period.
Right.
And then moving out of the development into some other form.
Permanent housing.
But the supportive housing could be permanent?
Correct, there is no length on stay. Next slide. So.
Is that anything that we do control anymore?
You know, the the last couple of slides are gonna, the last couple of slides are gonna aggregate. So you're gonna see like big picture, what used to be your authority and what is your authority today?
Okay.
And that'll, that'll bring it, after we go through these four, you'll see it all in totality, how they, how it all relates.
Alright.
Wow, this, this presentation's going slower than I thought, but uh, we're, we're having good conversations.
Can I, can I, again, make an observation, um, and and it, and it really, am I right in saying? That the uh, the the density, and this is all about, about. Um, getting concessions which add to the density, which makes a project more affordable, is that, I mean.
It's, it's all, it's all about increasing number of affordable units and offsetting that price of affordable with these other benefits the developer's getting.
Right. And it puts a premium on the development director's. Um, uh, ability to entice a good, a quote, good developer. Who is going to do a quote, good project. Because the, the developer who is not a good developer. Who's gonna build an ugly building in our community, has a lot more rights than they used to have previously. And the, and this, this commission and the development director have a lot less power vis a vis. That in terms of the ability to contain it, so you, so it's to the extent you have a developer. Who is willing to achieve some of these benefits, meaning the the development of additional housing. And particularly uh have some um low-income housing in that. Uh, and if they're willing to do a really good, quote, good project, you wanna hug them. And say thank you and encourage that, that behavior, right?
Sure.
Cuz there's no, there's less obligation to do that now.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, so, so now we're gonna talk about streamlined ministerial approval processes, next slide. There are a number of different statutes that allow for streamlined ministerial approval. Now, if you remember, I was talking about uh development in, let's see, is it in there? Yeah, AB twenty-eleven, that's the one that talks about streamlined affordable housing, commercial zones. Um, so that one passed uh last year and took effect this year. Um, but we're talking, we're gonna talk about SB thirty-five uh per year's city attorney's request. Uh, which talks about streamlined affordable housing in residential zones for very particular types of projects. Next slide. Oh, I was also told. Preface that conversation with noting that there should be no questions about individual projects pending before the city. But if you do have questions, ask staff and staff will respond at a later time. I made my disclosure.
Good disclosure. Lucas always does that and.
He beat me to the punch, actually, I was, I have that written down here as well, general ground rules.
Alright, so having said that, um, there is a list, an SB thirty-five list. Not all cities are subject to SB thirty-five. I was surprised to find out forty-two cities and counties are not subject to SB thirty-five. That number is bigger than I thought.
Is Ojai subject to it?
Ojai is definitely subject to it, Ojai is definitely subject to it. Two hundred and forty-six cities, including my city, of Sierra Madre, is subject to the streamlined ministerial approval for proposed developments. With at least fifty percent affordability. That threshold is triggered when. Uh, when you've made insufficient progress toward your arena for above moderate, sorry, for uh. For lower income units. So the city of Sierra Madre hasn't produced enough lower income units, so low and very low. And so for that reason, we're in this two hundred and forty-six uh bucket. Now, there's this two hundred and fifty-one bucket, which subjects cities and counties to streamline ministerial approval. For proposed developments with at least ten percent affordable, so it's even lower, that'll trigger this SB thirty-five. And Ojai is in that bucket, and you're in this bucket, or in this category. Uh, if you have made insufficient progress toward your above moderate and lower income. Regional housing needs allocation. So if you don't have, if you haven't produced enough moderate and lower income, they put you in this last two hundred and fifty-one uh category, sir.
You just said if you haven't produced enough housing in a category, who is required to produce the housing? My understanding was that neither the city nor any other particular entity is required to do that. The city is required to make it possible to do that if somebody wants to.
That's right, you're talking housing element law, but this is SB thirty-five, and let me tell you the difference here. Every eight years, the state says, produce X number of lower income, X number of moderate income. X number of above-market or market rate housing. You're not required to produce these units, you're merely required to zone for them, once every eight years.
Make it possible, right.
Okay.
But on April first every year, your director has to submit to HCD, to the state. The progress the city has made in in entitling units for these different categories. So HCD is keeping track of all cities and how they, and how much units, how many units are producing. Now, if HCD feels like you haven't made sufficient progress in your unit entitlement, SB thirty-five kicks in. And so that's the difference between the housing element law, which is what you're talking about, and SB thirty-five.
So SB thirty-five says the city's not required to build any affordable housing. But if nobody else chooses to build any, the city is still gonna get.
We're gonna make it easier for them to build it, is what, what's what they're saying. They're gonna streamline it, and I'll talk about what streamlining means and all that, but they're, they're making it easier for developers when they, when they make, but. Next slide will show, very specific type of housing. By the way, SB thirty-five came about in twenty seventeen, twenty seventeen. Been amended seventeen times already, so these laws are changing rapidly, hard for us to keep track. Uh, okay, so to be an SB thirty-five project, the project must be a multifamily housing development project. It needs to include deed restricted affordable units, is consistent with the objective development standards, uh and pays. Well, and we'll talk about that in a, in a later slide. And is a prevailing wage project that, that with skilled and trained workforce, basically union labor.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So that's.
That doesn't keep the cost down.
No.
No. And so if you go to the next part of this, so that's the project. The site also has to have certain conditions, so the site needs to be within an urbanized area or urban cluster. And I just pulled up HCD's list and you are, Ojai is an urban, is is within an urbanized area or urban cluster. Uh, is within a jurisdiction identified by HCD, which I just said it is, uh, would not require the demolition of certain types of housing. Uh, usually affordable deed restricted housing, does not need to be subdivided under certain circumstances, that's really technical, I won't get into it. Has seventy-five percent of the adjoining parcels developed with urban uses, has a residential designation in the general plan and zoning. And is located in a prohibited, is not located in a prohibited environment such as wetlands, farmlands, um.
Et cetera.
So.
What is the et cetera?
Et cetera, there's a long list of them, one of them, one of them is located within a very high fire hazard severity zone, and everyone gets excited when I say that, but.
There we are, the whole city.
Whole city.
But uh, it says, I'm quoting now from the statute. This subparagraph does not apply to sites that have adopted fire hazard mitigation measures pursuant to existing building standards. Or state fire mitigation measures applicable to development. What that means in non-legalese is that if your city has adopted the the fire code, state fire code, as part of your building standards. Then it's gonna include mitigation measures in that fire code to reduce fire risk to your homes. And so therefore, that exception does imply, which is every city, basically, which is every city.
Doesn't make any sense.
Which is every city.
Uh, now, uh, within an urbanized area, so what classifies as an urbanized area?
This is.
County?
Uh, uh, no, this, this is a um census bureau designation, uh, that. Um, and there's a definition, and I, and I don't know the definition off the top of my head, but it's a census designation. And um HCD then compiles a list based on that census designation.
It, it probably has changed since the last time I read this, but I did see something where there was a single. Urban area designation that covered Oxnard, Ventura and Ojai.
County, yeah.
None of the unincorporated county in between.
Right.
Just the three cities. And that puts much more of a burden on us.
Yeah, cuz we're.
Than on the other two cities. They have a lot more open land.
Yeah.
And arguably, a lot more very dense housing.
Yeah, and I would argue we're a little more rural than those areas.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're, if you're Calaveras County up north, this might apply, this might not apply to you, but if you're Ventura County, it's probably gonna apply.
It's gonna apply, yeah, okay.
Next slide.
Well, excuse me, is it? If, if it was possible to incorporate more of our. Um, unincorporated, um, Ojai, county, county Ojai as opposed to city Ojai. Into the city.
The valley.
Well, well.
Annexation, more land.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, that's it, annexation of the agglions in the east end, for instance, which are outside of uh this. If we had a bigger footprint, um, it's possible that we would be in that, we would not be in that pool.
I don't know, I'd have to research that, I have no idea.
My understanding of annexation, though, is that both the voters of the city by majority, at least, if not supermajority. And.
The area.
The owners of the property to be annexed, both have to approve that.
Right. So we have to look like an attractive alternative to the people around us as a means of governance as opposed to the county. And I, I, I mean that, and uh, um, you know, what's the benefit of being incorporated into the city of Ojai? Uh, and is there one, and can we dangle that?
There have been a few annexations over the past, I don't know, thirty years or so, but they've been small.
In holdings or, you know, I, I know.
Know the county's encouraging it, they would like to see more annexation.
Anyway, just uh.
So, so as I mentioned, streamlining. Um, so how does this streamlining work for purposes of SB thirty-five? So the process is, the developer submits a notice of intent to submit an SB thirty-five application. So he let us know, before they even submit anything, before they submit an application, they have to let us know they're gonna submit an SB thirty-five application. Then we go to the Native American tribes to consult with them. After we, after we conclude our consultations with Native American tribes, um, the developer then submits the development application. If we determine it to be complete, then within sixty days, the, the city determines whether the, the project complies with objective development standards. And if it does comply with objective development standards, then we send it to the planning commission within ninety days. Uh, to hold a public hearing to consider approval or disapproval. And, this is a big deal, the entitlement does not expire in certain instances. So you can have this, usually, I don't know how it is in Ojai, I haven't looked at your code, but usually entitlements expire within a year, two years.
Six months.
Six months in Ohio. So it's six months, pretty short, um, this entitlement potentially could not expire, so it's, it's valuable, you can sell it.
Being a building permit or whatever.
Uh, no, the, not the building permit, the entitlement would be um authority to build an SB thirty-five project. And then, once they, they can sell that to somebody, and then that person can go in and apply for building permits and all that stuff.
Okay.
Those are, those are post-entitlement permits.
The, the limitation or the time limit that Lucas is talking about, I think, is after issuance of a building permit, right?
But. Microphone here. I mean, we have, so a building permit, if nothing is done, yeah, it's, it's six months and you're done. But you're saying a land use entitlement.
Land, land use entitlements usually have an expiration date too, it, it's probably, it's probably in your code.
Cuz that would be a year, I mean, that's.
It's a year, yeah, usually it's a year, in, in the city of Sierra Madre, it's also a year. Um, but anyway, you can see how it might be helpful, maybe they don't have the funds to build an SB thirty-five project now. But they get it entitled and then they raise the funds after the fact because their entitlement doesn't expire. So, um, this provides them a little bit of flexibility.
It, it's attached to the land so they could sell the property.
It runs with the land, runs with the land.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no end.
Entitled, well, in, in, in certain circumstances, uh, but there would be no end, yeah, no end.
And there's no obligation, meaning if you get the entitlement to do it, you don't have to do it.
No, and that's true of all entitlements.
But it, it sounds like it would make the land more valuable if you choose to sell it.
Yeah, sure.
Right.
Yeah.
I think that's important to rehash, if an entitlement is granted, is the. If an entitlement is granted, is the developer required to build that still?
No.
Okay, they have the opportunity, they've gone through the process.
Right.
Still not required?
Correct.
Twenty years down the line, are they still required?
No.
Okay, I think that's important.
Huge.
Yeah.
Now, the, the second bullet engages in scoping consultation with Native American tribe, what does that entail?
Yeah, so usually it's, it's, it's similar to what we do in sequo, usually they're looking for tribal resources. And if they find some.
Like what does that mean tribal resources?
Like a graveside or something. If, if they find some, they'll have to, yeah, they'll have to, they'll have to mitigate it. And, and mitigation can be expensive. And so that might fit, maybe the project becomes infeasible as a result.
This, this is like the preliminary arche- archaeological assessment, that sort of thing.
Something like that, yeah, and, and again, there's, there's a reason why. There's a Native American specific tribal consultation in the same way, there's a reason why they have to use uni- union labor. Because these groups, uh, have advocated at the state legislator level to make sure that their interests are met and so the. But when, when the, when the state passed SB thirty-five, they're balancing a lot of different interests and you'll see in the next slide. What these, what some of these interests are.
That second bullet, I know there's a project in Ventura that ran into that.
I, oh, yeah. Who's, who's your, who's your late Na- Native American tribe locally here, is it the? Chumash or?
It's Chumash, yeah.
Yeah, it's Venturano, Santa Barberano.
Yeah.
Band of Mission Indians, which is part of Chumash.
Correct, and we have, we have specific representation.
Okay, good.
But that, all that takes place before the developer even submits an application.
Saves everyone time and money.
They have to submit a notice to an, of intent.
Right, and they have to agree before the project starts. Or be- before the application is submitted, that they will do, um, uh, union labor or they'll do the equivalent.
It's a, it's a condition, yeah.
But they're given a specific timeline in which to do this, whereas if that timeline expires. The project moves forward or how does that?
For the Native American consultation, there's a timeline.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not, it, it doesn't hold up the project, they're given a spot in line in terms of how this moves along.
Yeah.
And if there's no response, then the, the process moves on.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Next slide. So for the developer, you, and you could just click through the first one. For the developer, this is from the developer's perspective. There's a big cost savings here, again, we're gonna balance interest, this is what the legislator's doing.
OEIR.
Skipping sequo because it's no longer. Uh, it's not really a discretionary project anymore, it's ministerial. So it exempts you from sequo, a huge expense that they don't have to bear. So like, you know, usually you'd go through the tribal consultation process as part of sequo. The legislator said you don't have to do the full sequo thing, but you still have to do tribal consultation. The streamlined ministerial approval process, which we discussed. Bending development standards to the density bonus law because they get density bonus. Uh, benefits from having an SB thirty-five project cuz they're building an affordable project. And, uh, I guess. I say preferential parking standards, density bonus law has preferential parking standards, SB thirty-five has its own set of preferential parking standards, I'm not gonna get into it, it's complicated. But these are cost savings to the developer. Now, there are cost. Uh. Uh, burdens to developer too, if, if you click on the next one.
Quick question.
Yeah.
Sorry, that first bullet exempt from sequo, so if a developer wanted to build on. A land, you know, a piece of land and that land was contaminated for whatever reason, oil, whatever. Um, they could, they could do it cuz they don't require a sequo.
There are other federal laws that kick in, though. So while you're right, sequo wouldn't apply, there's still RICRA and CERCLA. Which are separate federal laws that usually deal with cont- contamination, so I don't know that you can just do it. There's a, there's a public safety issue there too.
CERCLA is super fun stuff.
Yeah, and, and, and there's always, yeah, I mean, I'm sure we would make them do environmental testing. For, for, for stuff like that, if, especially if we're on notice that something like that exists.
Yeah, we're aware of it in the past.
So the cost burden to developers not insubstantial. They have to pay prevailing wage, they must use a skilled and trained workforce and they need to record affordability covenants. On these units fifty-five years for sale and forty-five years for rent, so it's the forty-five years for rent usually in the past, yeah.
That's a floor.
That's a floor, it could be for a longer period of time. But usually, I mean, this, this period, I guess. Makes sense as I, as I've learned from a, from a business perspective because it's usually tied to the life of the building, so like after fifty-five years. A lot of these buildings come down and they build something new, but you know, not always the case.
But you said, you said that's a floor, it sounds like there's a negotiation that could go on. Uh, if the city said, I want seventy-five years, not fifty-five, is that a possible outcome of this discussion?
No, no, the developer could have a longer period, but I don't believe this, well, let me think about that for a second.
I, I just, I wonder how many of these things are absolutes and how many of them are squishy?
Yeah, let me get back to you on that.
I mean, we, if, if, if something's coming to us, I understand, we're talking about ministerial decisions right now. But if we get to discretionary stuff, we really kinda need to know what the rules are.
Get back to you on that.
I've seen longer. But those are typically negotiated with the developer. The, I was always wondering with the forty-five versus fifty-five, that does make sense, the life of a building. The construction materials aren't what they used to be, right, so you're not necessarily gonna get a hundred years out of a building like that.
A quick question, so if, if a developer goes through this process, uh, they say, hey, I wanna SB thirty-five project. To, to determine if it's prevailing wage, to determine if it's a skilled and trained workforce. Who is doing that, who is?
That's at the state level.
So the state is monitoring.
Yeah, I believe.
prevailing wage means.
Yes.
What the skill level is and.
Yes, yes, and, and, and like the, the contractor when they. Um. Cuz all these contractors are licensed.
Yeah.
And they report to the state for these things, so they'll have to report this as well.
Okay, so we're, we would be required as a city to make sure they're doing all this stuff.
I think, I think your building code officer probably looks into this too, maybe.
Yes, but I also, I also believe it's something that can be baked into the affordable housing agreement.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Right.
Definitely.
So that gets addressed within that.
It's part of a contractual document, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
Next slide. Okay. Talked about density bonus, we talked about S- uh, SB thirty-five. Um. Housing Accountability Act is next, and if we could have the Chair Quillacy and Commissioner Murphy read off.
Another morality.
This next, HCD presentation, so Chair, if you wouldn't mind starting us off with the orange.
I get the orange, okay.
I can't read it.
All right, isn't it frustrating when a city denies a project that meets all of the city's zoning requirements?
Yep, in my opinion, cities shouldn't be able to deny a project that follows the rules written right there on the page.
Especially since cities are in the driver's seat when it comes to writing the rules anyway. They decide where residential uses are allowed and all of the development standards like setbacks and building heights.
As long as the development standards are written objectively. A person should be able to read and understand the requirements directly from the code. Not wait for the public hearing to learn if their roof pitch is compatible with the neighborhood.
Agreed, and the bar to deny a complaint proj- a compliant project. Should not appropriately, should set appropriately. Deny a compliant program.
Project.
Project. Should set appropriately be high.
Weird sentence.
It's a weird awkward sentence.
Yeah.
Awkward sentence.
Okay, blame HCD.
I'll, I'll agree with your awkward sentence. I think. That to deny a project or reduce the number of units in a project, the city should need to make. Strict findings of denial, these findings of denial should be laid out in the state law.
I think in that last orange one, the words are in the wrong order.
Yeah.
Should be set appropriately high.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
Next slide.
Good correction.
Next, next, yeah, do it. Uh, okay, so. Definitions matter here. And the first definite, the most important definition under the Housing Accountability Act is what is a housing development project? It's three things. Uh, residential units only. And residential units has been determined to be, has been interpreted to be two units or more. So we got two units or more, we're talking residential.
No single family housing.
Single family housing is excluded, but. Chair, question to you. If you have an application before you. And they're proposing to build a new single family home and an ADU, is it a housing development project?
I think under the code right now, you can build an ADU by right.
Putting that aside, is it a housing development project? A, a brand new house and an ADU, empty land.
I guess so. It's residential units only.
Two units, an ADU is a separate unit and a house and a single family home is a separate unit.
What if it's an, what if it's an. An attached ADU, what if it's a carve-out?
Fine.
Junior ADU.
Even if, even if it's an attached ADU, totally fine, question back to you. There's an existing home. But you have, but, but, but the director receives an application to tear down that is existing home and build a new home, bigger. With an ADU in the back, is that a housing, uh, development project under the Housing Accountability Act?
By what we just talked about, I'd say yes.
It's not because they're only proposing new one unit.
Oh, net new one.
It's about net units. I know it's very confusing.
But if, but if they were to put a junior ADU in the house and build an ADU in the back, it'd be a net two.
It'd be a net two, but for purpose of the Housing Accountability Act, it doesn't matter because ADUs are governed by a different law. And, and the reason I brought up that primary unit example.
You just said it was an HAA development if it was a house and an ADU, and now you just said ADUs don't count.
Now, now, I'll clarify that, it's confusing, I'll clarify that comment. In your, in the example I gave you, the reason why it matters is because whereas the ADU is governed by a separate law. The primary housing unit. Is gonna be governed by HAA. In, in the commissioner's e- example, he's talking about two ADUs, so we don't have to worry about the HA because there's no real. Primary housing to worry about. That distinction makes sense? Yeah, I know, I know, it's hard, let's, let's go to the other def- oh, sorry, uh, residential units only, mixed use developments without at least two thirds of the square footage designated for residential use or transitional housing or supportive housing. Those are the three things that qualify as a housing development project for purpose of the Housing Accountability Act. Go to the next slide. I just wanna draw a distinction here from the very beginning, so we don't get confused. Housing Accountability Act is one law with a definition for a housing development project. There is a different definition for a housing development project under the Housing Crisis Act. And that definition incorporates a single unit. That's the difference, I don't know why they did it, I don't know, it just, these differences exist and.
Clean under HAA, but we got you under HCA.
Right.
Uh, for a single, for a single family home and there, so we're gonna talk about the different rules and, you know, HCA. Lot of procedural stuff and we'll talk about that, HAA, Housing Accountability Act substantive stuff. And I'll make this distinction right now.
And I'll bet they both somewhere in the legislation say, notwithstanding any other provision of law, here's the rule.
Yeah, actually, yeah. Uh, so, okay, so if you're gonna think about. How this Housing Accountability Act works out, how it plays out in practice. You have to begin the definition. Is this a housing development project? No. Don't worry about it then, it's not, it's not subject to the, so a single family home, not subject to the Housing Accountability Act. We don't have to think about the Housing Accountability Act anymore. But if it's two units or more, okay, then we ask the next question, does, does it have any affordable units? It doesn't, okay. Then we have a, we have to apply a default standard under subdivision J, don't have to memorize that, but. But if, if it does have affordable units. Then we apply a different standard of rev- of review for this project. Under subdivision D, so let's look at what this default. Standard review is in the next slide. So here's the default standard, this is, now we're talking. Multiple units, market rate, right? Here's, here's how we analyze, here's, here's the authority vested in this body under the HA. The planning commission. Uh, if the, if the project is consistent with objective general plan zoning subdivision design standards. The planning commission cannot disapprove the project or impose conditions that reduces density, the project's density. Unless it makes both finding, both of the following findings. There's a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety and there is no feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate or avoid. The adverse impact. A very high bar to meet, by the way, not easy. To make these findings, especially because of the last one that says you can, if there's a feasible method to satisfactorily mitigate it, so in your example. Uh, Commissioner Trent.
Yes.
Vice Chair Trent.
Yes.
Um. Toxic pollution in the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
Definitely, you're making the first finding, specific adverse impact to public health, no, no question. But can it be satisfactorily mitigated to avoid the adverse impact, maybe, maybe not. In your example, it's possible you might deny this affordable, I mean, a market rate multi-unit development, maybe.
Or, or condition it that the first ten feet of dirt be removed and replaced.
And i- it might be so expensive that they can't even build that anymore, but yeah, possible.
Uh, what about, what about things like setbacks to prove, to prevent. A fire in one structure from inducing a fire in an adjacent structure?
The setback requirement is going to be part of the objective general plan zoning subdivision standards, so they have to meet that setback.
Okay. So that is at least one thing we can still require.
They're, oh, they're gonna have, and that's, that's your real strength here. You, your authority. Is gonna be all on the front end, they've taken away your backend, you used to have backend authority where the project comes to you and you condition it. To kind of meet what the city wants. Your real authority now is on the front end, creating a zoning code that really reflects what you want your city to look like. And the thing is, your zoning could, those, those standards that exist, like setbacks and all that stuff. They have to be objective and I s- I swear I'm gonna get to that definition of what objective is, I promise. Um, but yeah, they basically shifted all your authority to the front and taken away from the backend.
But.
Got it.
Those objective things, they have to have numbers, but they also have to be reasonably related to public health or safety or.
No.
No?
No, nope, they just have to be objective zoning standards, so objective, great, next slide, excellent, well timed. No, 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 you, you're doing the right thing here, go ahead. Okay, so I'm gonna tell you the technical definition, we're gonna run through the, some examples. Gotta take a breath, this is a long one. Means involving no personal or subjective judgment by a public official and being uniformly verifiable by reference to an external and uniform benchmark or criterion available and knowable. By both development applicant or proponent and the public official. Now, let's go through some examples of what that means. Numeric standards generally are objective. But think about color, so Commissioner Murphy. Is, if you say. You live in Santa Barbara and you say your houses have to have like a white facade, is, is white an objective standard?
No, there are many kinds of whites.
Right, now, if I say. Uh, a specific shade of white.
Specific Pantone number.
Right, if you provided that, is that objective?
Yes.
Yeah. All right, so if you go to the next point here.
As long as you put a number on it, it's objective.
Yeah.
Not necessarily. Uh, not necessarily, you could have an external reference, but no, if you get, if you get a number on it, most likely it's going to be objective, but look at this one. I already kinda gave away the answer, so bad on me, but this is, this is a real thing, this is, this was a court case, now you tell me if you think this is objective. Here's what the standard said. If height varies by more than one story between buildings, a transition or step in height is necessary, would you think that's objective?
It doesn't specify what the transition is supposed to look like.
Right, it could be a foot, it could be ten feet.
Yeah, well, it doesn't say what the height of a one-story building is, so that's, that's subjective.
The, the court, the court honed in on exactly the point you'd raised, Chair, transition. They said first, it says transition or step, so there's a choice, so first, the fact that you gave them a choice means it could be one or the other, causing some confusion. But then they said transition isn't defined either, we don't know what a tr- we know, we know more or less what a step is cuz it was defining the code. But what, what does a transition mean? Well, what, what does a transition mean? And if two people can have different opinions about the word transition, we've lost. And so, it's a, it's a, this isn't your dictionary definition of objective. This is a really stringent definition of objective. So I remember when the law came out, we tried to write some of these in the City of Sierra Madre with planning staff, city attorney and planning staff together. And we threw our hands up like this is. Much more difficult than we thought it was going to be. Um, I know there are, I know there are, um, third-party consultants that help draft these things. Um, but it's, it's challenging. Focusing on the numeric standards is, is the safest approach, but I don't wanna say it's the only approach cuz there are other ways to do it. But that reference to an external standard is important. Um, standard for review, right, so I've lost myself in my own thoughts.
Uh, I have another example that I li- least like to throw by, throw at you. Um, and this has to do with the National Fire Protection Association, they have their book.
Yeah.
That says, at what point in any given type of and size of building? Are you required to put sprinklers in? Okay, and it has to do with the size and the type of the building, but it also has to do with the availability. Of water for fire suppression at a given static and dynamic pressure and a given flow for a given period of time.
You're, you're confusing two things, I think.
Okay.
All this is intended to limit your authority under the zoning code. What you're talking about are the building standards and none of this is affected by building standards. They have to comply with all of your building standards. So, all that, all, everything you were saying, they still have to comply with.
Alright, yeah, it's all Title IX, alright.
So, if your project is affordable. Here is the standard overview that you have. The city cannot dis- disapprove unless one of the, one of the following findings are made. Uh, you have a complying housing element and you've met the re-allocation for all income categories proposed for the project. The project has specific adverse impacts upon the public health or safety and there is no feasible method of mitigation, mitigating or avoiding the impact. Den- denial is required to comply with specific state and federal law. And there is no feasible method to comply, it's on land zone for agricultural or there is inadequate water or sewer to serve the project. Uh, and the project, or the project is inconsistent with both zoning and general plan land use designations. Now, uh, think, think about this. Both zoning and general land use designation, I don't know if you have this problem in your city. But in our city in Sierra Madre, we definitely have the problem where the general plan says one thing and the zoning said another thing. Because we, we just never got around to updating our zoning code. And what happens when your general plan says one thing and your zoning says another? General plan controls. So, we've had this issue a couple of times.
Uh, on, on point number four, there is inadequate water or sewer to serve the project. Who makes that determination?
Mm-hmm, you do.
As a city?
Uh, no, as like the legislative body, the Planning Commission, you do. Um, but.
And what, and so we have to have some sort of external standard, which is a phrase we saw on the previous chart. There has to be some rule that we can cite to say yes or no to a particular project.
Mm-hmm, I have, I have a lot of opinions on this, but. Uh, Matt Summers tells me that this might be an issue in one of your projects and I'm, I'm hesitant to.
I, I don't wanna talk about any particular project.
But yes.
But, yeah.
But yes, you are the body that makes that decision.
So we are the body to determine whether water is adequate or.
Inadequate water, then we go talk to the water purveyor.
I thought Casitas made that decision.
Well, for, for purposes of this, for purpose of the Housing Accountability Act, you are the body that makes the decision, however, the, this is the other part I want to add. Your determination needs to be based on facts.
Sure, yep.
So this isn't an arbitrary decision that, that you can just make, right? And what are the facts on which you're going to make that determination? And I don't know who your water purveyor is and I, and I don't wanna get into details on your projects, but. Facts have to match.
And, and the same with sewer, right?
Sewer same.
Yeah.
Does, does the city provide sewer service?
No, it's a, it's a separate, not city-owned or operated sewer system.
County?
No, it's, it's an independent special district.
Gotcha, okay.
Um, but inadequate water. Does mean that we have, we have to understand from the water purveyor at that parcel. What, what water is available to all of those standards. Static and dynamic pressure and flow for a period of time.
These are, these are very fact-intensive inquiries.
And, and how would we find that out? Say there was a project that came to us and we doubted. The, the hydrant having the pressure and the flow and all of it. Do we go to the water purveyor and, and ask for a test on the hydrants nearby? Or?
I don't have a legal answer for you, this is going to be a fact-intensive investigation.
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that it would be a technical document that would then provide the necessary facts.
We would, we would reach, the city would require the developer to demonstrate that there is adequate water.
Not adequate water, but the actual flow from the hydrant.
Well, adequate being defined in terms of pressure and flow and period of time.
Not how much water's in the lake, but, but, yes.
So the developer would be pushed to Casitas and Casitas would have to, um.
Run a test.
Give it a, give a specific answer in, in a piece of, in a document which would then be submitted to you.
That's what I was talking about before with NFPA one, the National Fire Protection Association, it has those standards in it.
Right.
Uh, question on two, um, I know that there has been cities that have. Basically said that they're in high fire zones and it's a safety issue if they build more housing. So how, how, what defines public health and safety?
It's not defined.
So, I mean, like if you have factual data to support your argument, where does that, like, how do you support a public health argument or safety argument? I get the public health with, like, you know, contaminant, contaminated soil, but there's all kinds of arguments you can make for public health.
It's, it's, it's intentionally broad because the legislator can't anticipate what all the potential public health and safety issues will be, so.
Gotcha.
This is gonna be.
Gotta have it.
Got all the facts.
Factually.
Got all the facts.
Right, it's.
Alright, that's cool.
It's general, but man, look at the way in which it's written, adverse impact. Adverse impact, and then the last piece says, no feasible method. No feasible meth, that's, that sounds like a very high threshold of which to me.
But I know cities that have fought it on those two grounds. I don't know if they won, I don't know if they won.
But you can, you could condition a project to require one of those feasible methods be used to mitigate.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay, next slide. Uh, so, next slide, or, uh, next point. So the, uh, the standard review here applies to all discretionary. Land use entitlements of a housing development project. So subdivision map approvals, conditional use permits, design review permits, hillside and development permits, I don't know if you have all these, but. Discretion demolition permits, these are things we have in Sierra Madre, so I threw it in the slide. But question to you, sir. Uh, or actually Commissioner Murphy, let's see if you got this one. Pop quiz, they did this to me in law school, I have to do this to you now, I'm sorry. Would this apply if the applicant is requesting a zone change? Would the same sta- cuz the zone change, they, they would need the zone, let's say it's commercial and they purchased the property, they would need it to be residential in order to develop something? So would it apply if the entitlement they're requesting, at least in this first phase, is a zone change to residential?
I would guess it would.
And fair guess, but it wouldn't, because it doesn't apply, it doesn't apply to your legislative decisions. Legislative decisions are. Zonings, uh, changes. These are all quasi adjudicatory decisions, they're not, they don't apply citywide really. They apply specifically to this specific applicant. So, if someone comes in requesting a general plan change or requesting a zoning, uh, map designation. You don't apply any of these standards, you have full discretion, full discretion.
Lot splits are under that subdivision map approval.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, and you click through one more? It does not apply to variances. Commissioner, can you tell me why it doesn't apply to, I'm sorry, I can't see your name from here.
Bennett.
Commissioner Bennett, why, why doesn't it apply to variances?
Beats me. How is a variance different from a waiver?
It's waiver, oh, for develop, for the, uh, oh, because it's not a density bonus, it's not a density.
General.
No, waivers, a waiver is a specific term for density bonuses, but a variance.
Variance is for land, right?
Uh, no, they're actually the same, you're, you're onto something. Waivers wave development standards. Variances also wave development standards. Here's the difference, a waiver is in the context of a density bonus benefit. A variance is totally apart from, you can apply, you don't need a density bonus, you can just apply for a variance. But it doesn't apply to variances because if you remember, one of the conditions is. Your project has to be compliant with all objective development standards. Well, by its definition, if you're applying for a variance, what you're applying for is not, it's not, it doesn't, it doesn't comply with your objective development standards. You wanna go beyond your objective development standard and do something else, that's why you're applying for a variance. So it doesn't apply to variances, which is a discretionary approval like the rest of them, but. Doesn't apply.
Now I'm confused. I, I'm a developer, yeah, not the first time tonight, for sure. So as a developer comes in with a proposed development that meets all the objective standards. Okay, but wishes to do something more flexible.
Question, is the, is the development, does it have a certain threshold number of affordable units? Yes, yes or no to that one?
Okay, so you're saying variances only apply to affordable housing?
No.
Type things?
No.
What's the, what's the nature of the project?
Yeah, is it, if it's an affordable.
It's a multifamily.
Market rate, market rate, can we keep it at market rate? Okay.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Then. And, and it otherwise meets all the requirements.
Okay.
The city doesn't, to my knowledge, say that any multifamily housing has to have a certain percentage of affordable units.
Correct.
Okay, so let's just say for argument's sake, there aren't any in this one. Okay, but now. If I want, if I want to build more or build larger or build closer to the edges of the property. I want a bigger FAR or I want a bigger lot coverage, whatever. Are those variances or are those waivers? And what right would I have as a developer to any of that?
Yeah, good, so here's, here's the hypo, back with, with the facts you provided. Market rate development, multiple units, the person wants greater FAR. You have to apply for a variance. You apply for a variance, this commission has full discretion, you can deny that project. Full subjective discretion, like the olden days.
Okay.
If the project is affordable though, and it meets certain thresholds, they're getting the density bonus. With the density bonus, they want more FAR, they get the waiver and you lose that discretion.
The, that's, they get greater FAR with an incentive or a concession.
Potentially, yeah, and maybe they're, they're gonna ask for a waiver, but they can get it through the incentive and concession as well.
But to go back a few charts then to incentives and concessions. Once, once objectively, and I hate to use that word at this point. A project is proposed that meets whatever the density bonus requirements would be. Including certain number of affordable units at various stages. Then. The developer is, is entitled to one to four incentives or concessions.
Right.
Does the, who gets to say what those incentives or concessions are?
Developer.
Is that the sole discretion of the developer?
Yes, yes, they, they note it in their application, yep.
Okay. It's a request you can't say no to.
That's what I've noticed, is it's, it's a request that with, with a very firm request, right?
Yeah, okay.
Call it a demand if you'd like.
Make an offer you can't refuse.
Okay.
Sequa.
So we talked about SP thirty-five and we said, sequa doesn't apply. But for all other projects. Unless the statute specifically says sequa doesn't apply, like ADU law says sequa doesn't apply. But for all other resident, all other residential developments, doesn't matter if it's affordable or it's market rate. The Housing Accountability Act says expressly, sequa applies. So sequa is the biggest tool you have for a housing project. Uh, that is, that's frankly subject to sequa, certain things like SP thirty-five projects are not subject to sequa, so that's not a tool in your toolbox anymore. In, in the sequa process, there's a lot of discretion and a lot of the discretion comes in, in the, uh. In the, uh, sequa mitigation measures that you're able to impose.
And a lot of, a lot of cost just in determining the ground truth of the project.
Which is borne by the developer. Which is borne by developer, not the city, yeah. Excellent. Uh, determination of compliance. So, Housing Accountability Act also says. That the city is required to determine whether the housing development project is consistent with the objective development standards. Inconsistent, apologies. Within thirty days of an application being determined complete, if a hundred fifty units or less. So, I don't have the big chart, um, I took that out to save time and obviously it didn't help cuz we're at seven forty-seven. But, uh. Think of it like this, application is submitted. Staff reviews it. Staff determines certain things in the application are missing, sends it back to developer, developer tries to fix it. Developer gets it right, good, your application is determined to be complete. Then. If it's a Housing Accountability Act project, right, two, two or more units. Our director here is given two, given thirty days to let the, to let the applicant know whether. His project is inconsistent with our development standards. And if it's determined not to be inconsistent, so if it's consistent, he'll elevate it to you.
And it's, is it possible, this is for Lucas, is it possible there'd only be one meeting of this body? In that thirty-day period of time, depending upon when it gets submitted and how many days in the month there are and things like that.
So. So before I answer that question, I have a question for.
The project shouldn't go to the Planning Commission before you've made this determination.
Yeah, so, let's say for instance. A development comes in and this happens, um, regularly. Where I have a corrections letter that goes out and then, and it's incomplete and they submit. But they don't submit everything, so then I do a second. Does that, like, the Permit Streamlining Act, does it reset the thirty-day clock?
Yep, every time.
It does.
Ev- every time you send them a letter of incompletion, it resets.
And then, and then once, once it gets to the point where it's, they've addressed all of the, the objective pieces. That I've thrown at, at the project pursuant to our codes. Then we look at the thirty-day clock of going to, um, to the commission or, or council.
Well, this doesn't go to the council, I think, I think you should be making this determination.
So I make this determination?
It's too, it, it just runs too quickly, I think, to get it before the, the, the commission. Really what's happening here is when this project is coming to you. Staff should make this determination ahead of time. Is it compliant with our objective standards or isn't?
Right.
And if it is objective, then it comes before you and then you make the determination, are there specific adverse impacts here?
Within the thirty days.
No, after thirty days.
After.
After thirty days.
So I got a question, so let's say that it doesn't meet objective standards and they have a waiver that they apply for and it meets all of the affordable housing criteria. They have to make that determination.
Sorry, sorry, timeout, you said, you said, they apply for a waiver and it meets the affordable.
Sorry, sorry, you have to take out that last part, but they apply for a waiver to, to remove some of the, uh, conditional objective standards.
Okay.
Um, so if they, if they apply for that waiver, they have to do that on application. They can't do it after they've submitted it to Lucas.
Well, this wouldn't apply. If they apply for a variance, this wouldn't apply because.
Not a variance, like a waiver, like what we were talking about earlier.
If it's affordable?
Yeah.
Uh, right.
They have to do that before they submit it to Lucas, they can't do it, like Lucas can't come back to us, it doesn't meet our standards and then they come, and then they put it, and they find it and they apply it.
I, I would, I, yeah, I would argue, I would argue it has to be in your application.
From, from the get-go.
From the get-go, that's what I would argue.
Okay, cool.
But this is, this is a timeline on the city determining whether the application is consistent or not consistent.
Yeah, and I, and it's staff.
And once that, once that has happened, if it says consistent after twenty-nine days, then is there, is there a state law that says how soon does the planning commission have to see it?
Yes.
Okay, what's that?
Uh, it's not, it's not actually judged by number of days after that, um, it's, it's gonna be determined, well.
Because we have noticing requirements and things too.
Yeah, there is a timeline, it's, it's gonna, I'm gonna confuse you, are you ready?
I've been confused all night, go ahead.
That timeline for when you have to see it and make a determination is actually linked to when your sequa analysis is complete. Uh, so it's not triggered by when the application is complete.
Okay.
Usually, you don't run into this problem because every city I work for submits their sequa determination and the entitlement determination in one package together to the planning commission, so you don't really have this problem. So there's a sequa timeline and then once you complete the sequa process, then it triggers the entitlement timeline. And like I said, you don't really have this because they're packaged together and brought to the planning commission same time.
Okay.
Okay?
Go ahead.
Uh.
There's mine.
All right.
But, but it still goes to the question, is, is there, is a thirty day period that we have to act on when it's been handed to?
No, 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 but there is a different limitation, there's a five meeting rule which I'm gonna get to.
Five meeting?
Five meeting.
Okay.
I'll get, I'll get to it, I promise.
Makes sense.
Thirty days what Lucas has or what we have?
That's on Lucas, yeah.
It says city. But because the process moves so quickly and because the person best equipped to make this determination is staff, I always say, staff make this determination, don't put it on the commission, it's, it's too, A, it's, it's very fact intensive and B, the timeline is too quickly, to, to notice these things, to get it before the commission, we just won't get it done in time. And the risk of us missing the deadline and then it being defaulted, determined to be compliant is too great a risk.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Makes sense.
Under the Housing Accountability Act, um, this, like I said, this law had existed, a lot of these laws had existed before, but they didn't really have teeth. Now in twenty seventeen and since then, the law has been amended to have teeth. Here's how it has teeth. First, who can initiate litigation? Before, it was always just the applicant and everyone kind of accepted that. Now, not only does the applicant the one that can initiate litigation, any person who would be eligible to apply for residency in the project
Wow.
can, can initiate litigation and a housing organization. So there is like organizations that advocate for, uh, housing. Uh, oftentimes they team up with someone who claims like they would have lived in the development had they had the opportunity and then they both end up suing the city. So, so it expands, the people who have legal standing is a term. Now, if, if liable, if liable, the court will order the city to approve the project within sixty days and may grant attorney's fees and costs. Now frankly, the attorney's fees and cost thing always kind of existed, but this order the city to approve the project in sixty days.
That sounds like summary judgment, the city lost.
And we didn't have this kind of specific performance remedy is a legal term, that before the, the judge would say, hey, you did this wrong, go back and figure it out. Now the judge says, go back and approve it, which is a different thing to say.
Yeah.
Uh, fines can be issued for non-compliance and they have been, um, issued to some cities. If the, if action's not taken within sixty days, the court will issue a minimum ten thousand dollar fine per housing unit.
Geez.
If the inaction was in bad faith, the minimum fine award is multiplied by five. Uh, HCD can also refer the matter to the Attorney General. Let me add another thing here, the Attorney General, uh, our, our current AG, Rob Banta, has created what he's called a hous- what do you call it, a housing strike force, which is a pretty cool name, admittedly.
Sounds like somebody dropping bombs on the city.
The, and just to give you an example of what they do, before, the AG would never get involved in a local housing matter unless there was some kind of lawsuit and then maybe they would join in the lawsuit, maybe, uncommon. Now, without even a lawsuit happening, the AG is weighing in. For example, this just happened and it's been happening, but the example here is, um, the AG issued a public response to the city of Elk Grove on September twenty-eighth, criticizing the city for denying a housing project for sixty-six, for sixty-six units of low income housing.
Elk Grove is a suburb of Sacramento, by the way.
In, in years past, this would be unheard of for the AG to opine on, on a local housing development. But the AG is now opining on these things and then when they finally deny the project, the AG is suing them. So the state's playing a, a much more active role in this and is trying to make examples out of certain cities who are particularly defiant. Uh, next slide. So the last one we're gonna talk about today is the Housing Crisis Act. And we're gonna have one more performance.
It's gonna get worse, oh my goodness.
We're gonna have one more performance, uh, so, um, let's see here, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Murphy.
It's just you and Lucas, you guys are the only ones left.
I can't, I, I, I can't say these things, I can't say these things, but Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Murphy, if you don't mind.
Uh, go ahead with the light blue.
You want me to do the light blue, Chris is harder to read.
I, that's exactly right. You found me out.
We've got the same melody.
Busted.
Bad eyes. Do you know what I find disagreeable?
What?
Well, there are a few different land uses, decisions being taken by the cities that I feel just aren't helping the housing crisis.
Could you give me a few examples?
Well, I see issues with one, down zoning or otherwise reducing residential development capacity, two, the imposs- imposition of development moratoria and development caps, and three, the use of non-objective development standards.
Yeah, I see your point, it might be good to hold off on that type of stuff until we get our housing issues sorted out.
Ojai really is the community of arts and culture. Great, great acting.
Now, I must admit, I didn't understand a word I said.
Yeah, that last, that last light blue, nah.
Well, you're, you're about to, I'm about to make sense of it, at least that's my task. Okay, so like SB thirty-five projects where cities are on a list, cities are also on a list for SB three thirty. Surprise, Ojai's on the list. And you're technically an affected city, uh, for purposes of SB three thirty, so you're on, you're on their, you're on their list. Next one. The, the Housing Crisis Act has substantive, um, uh, amendments it makes to restrict local development standards in some and demolition of residences, uh, I won't get into all of them, I'm gonna touch on some of them. And they have procedural amendments to housing development project applications and I'll get into some of them too. It's a big law, I won't get into all of it, I'll get into the, what I think are the highlights. This one you have to know.
Called builder's remedy?
Uh, no, the builder's remedy is actually under the Housing Accountability Act, I didn't get into the builder's remedy thing because it's not relevant to Ojai. You, you, I believe HCD approved your housing, your housing element?
It did, but.
Um, go ahead.
Yes, it did, but we also were non-compliant for, or at least the idea was that we were non-compliant for a while, so.
Not, we were not yet compliant for an extended period.
Yeah, we weren't officially certified by HCD standards.
But now you're officially certified?
Yes.
Great. Uh, okay, so five hearing rule, this, this one we should all know. If a housing development project, right, and now we're dealing with the Housing Crisis Act, so we're not talking about two or more units, we're talking about one unit. So if a housing development project, as low as one unit, has a complete application that complies with objective standards, right? Then the city is limited to five hearings in connection with the approval of that housing development project. What is a hearing? It includes public hearings, city-led workshops, appeals of your decisions and continuances. Now let's assume for a moment that a project comes before this board, it's agendized as a public hearing and Cherick Willisey, set, Willisey, did I pronounce it right? Says, I don't like it, I'm not even gonna consider it. I move to continue and you all vote to continue with them, well, you've just wasted one of your five public hearings. Um, and it, it's really those conducted by the city, so if the city conducts, we're talking post-application here, post-completed application.
Hearings with the director.
We're not talking hearings with the director, we're talking post-application, the city wants to do a community workshop led by the city. Led by the city, it counts. If the applicant wants to do however, their own workshop doesn't count against your five. So if you go to the next, uh, point, it'll, it excludes, important, legislative approvals. They want a zoning change, they want a general plan change, none of that counts in the five hearings. This is all those quasi-judicial decisions that I talked about, your design review permits, that kind of stuff, that's what this applies to.
Well, let's, let's say a developer wants a certain density bonus, they also want a zoning change. We can have a hearing and rule on a zoning change and then continue it and that doesn't count?
Here's, here's what we did in Sierra Madre with something, so usually what happens is, an applicant, like you said, will lump these things together. I want a zone change, design review permit, density bonus, lumped in altogether.
Yeah.
What we did in Sierra Madre recently, and it, it proved to be pretty successful for us, was we bifurcated this. We said applicant, we're gonna consider your zone change first, phase one of this project. You get your zone change passed, then we will consider your design review permits and your density bonus.
And, and if we granted a zone change, that's a legislative approval and it doesn't count against the five hearings.
And we had eight hearings on that zone change.
And if you decline the zone change.
Zone change alone.
And if you decline the zone change.
Then you don't have to consider rest. Something, something considered.
The rest of it isn't gonna matter.
Right, yeah, of course.
But if you approve the zone change, it didn't count as one of the five hearings either.
Right.
Yeah. Okay?
Uh, and I have just, a, a question, we have a number of, um, properties owned by the school district that are not usable. And I'm not asking about a specific project, um, but at some point, the school district has got to, um, put those, those properties to their highest and best use for the education of children. Uh, which may mean selling them or it may mean being, it's self-active in the development of it. And if the school board has its own hearings on this subject, do those count against the five?
No.
No, I think that's point four.
That's point four.
It's point four.
Again, for the record, I have not shared this with any of the commissioners, but they're anticipating all of them, yeah. The hearings, hearings held by other legislative bodies don't count, hearings before the application is determined complete, which if you use this right, it's a powerful tool.
Yeah.
You get an application in and you begin holding community workshops, city-led, none of that counts because the application has been, hasn't been determined to be complete yet, but you're letting the community know, hey, something's coming in the pipeline.
Yep, yeah, it's good.
Be aware, applicants-led, applicant-led meetings, um, we encourage, we try to encourage these a lot, so we don't have our own hearings. We say, you, you go out to the community and you pitch it to the community and then, you know, they bear that expense and.
School board did that once too, yeah.
Okay, so these are just things to consider, um, when an app, when an application comes in for you. But this is a, this is one of the new stricter rules and we should all be aware of it.
Good.
Next slide. Okay, no net loss intensity, old rule, uh, next point. The old rule said, the city cannot reduce general plan or zoning densities of residential parcels. I said old rule, existing rule, but it's been around for a long time. The city cannot reduce general plan or zoning densities of residential parcels unless the city identifies other sites where it can proportionally increase densities. This concept is called no net loss density. You're gonna reduce density here, you have to increase density here.
Yeah.
And you're talking about no net loss of housing units or potential housing units or what?
Per acre, yeah, units per acre, correct.
General planner zoning density.
Well, let's say the city wanted to reduce the density in one part of the city.
Yes.
And they increased the density in a vacant part of the city, is that still okay?
Yes. It's all about units per acre and making sure you have on balance, net zero change in units per acre.
Net zero potential for development.
Yes.
Okay.
Question. If something like that was to happen, it seems to me, within that calendar year, that would then be, be reported to HCD, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yes. So here's the new rule though, under, this, this existing rule stands.
That's old law.
This, i- it's, it's existing law and it stands, it's still good law, it's still good law. Here's the wrinkle. Under the Housing Crisis Act, the city cannot reduce the building intensity. We're not talking about densities anymore, we're talking about building intensity of residential parcels below that in effect as of January first, twenty eighteen, unless the city identifies other sites where it can proportionally increase intensity. Now you're going to ask me, sir, what is?
That's, that's a squishy word if I ever heard one.
Likely for us it's defined, so it includes, less intensive use includes reductions in height, density, floor a- area ratio, newer increased open space standards, lot size requirements, setbacks, minimum frontage requirements, maximum lot coverage limitations, every single development standard you can think of basically. If you change the development standards that reduce the development potential of a site.
Of a site, then you gotta compensate with another site.
Right.
Okay.
And, and this means, say, we've reduced a parcel or through zoning from being an R two to an R one.
Exactly, exactly.
And then we have to take an R one area and make it R two if we're gonna balance.
Something.
Or something.
Right, 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 so. Yeah, you got it, I was gonna give you an example, but you got it. Nice. Okay, moratoria, here was, here's the existing rule, this is already, this is, this has been law for a long time. The city can adopt an urgency ordinance to protect public safety, health and welfare uh, by blocking approval of entitlements. It needs to make certain findings and there's a threshold vote, it's, I think it's like four fifths, but the city can do it. Here's the new rule. The city cannot adopt a development policy standard or condition that would impose a moratorium on housing development unless approved by HCD. So, in the city of Sierra Madre, we had a water moratorium. The water moratorium said you couldn't have any new water connections because we had a, we had, we had a genuine water crisis. As a result, we had no new development of housing, none, for like two years, three years. No units were being developed in Sierra Madre. Now when the, when we found additional sources of water and we were able to secure them through contracts, we lifted the moratorium. Now let's say another water crisis were to occur today and the city council wanted to adopt that same water moratorium that adopted in the past, it can, but it needs to get HCD approval.
First HCD has to approve it, yeah.
Cause so they don't want them, they don't want cities adopting these really nearly. Next.
Um, Alex, there, and, and my memory may be wrong on this, but my recollection is that the city currently has a moratorium on drilling water wells. That's still in effect?
Hasn't been lifted, yeah.
Does that involve any of this stuff?
Uh, no, standing moratoria are not impacted by this. If the city wants to adopt.
It's a grandfathered moratorium.
Yes.
Okay.
Objective design standards. So, if you remember, I talked about. I talked about what the definition of objective is for the Housing Accountability Act. We define what they defi- what they mean by objective. Now, existing law, again, been around for a long time, says the city cannot disapprove of affordable housing projects. Due to design review standards unless it makes written findings, and that's why we always make written findings. Uh, when, you know, the planning commission decides to.
But objective doesn't fall in that definition.
Correct, because that, that's a new thing. Now. The struggle we're having is that the city cannot impose or enforce any new. Design standards established after January twenty twenty that are not objective. So, things like. The development has to be consistent with the, uh, look and feel of neighborhood. Those types of sta- those types of, uh, standards, we cannot adopt anymore. After, the ones that existed before January twenty twenty, still good, grandfathered in. But you can't adopt them now. So let's say you have one on the books. Uh, and there is a single unit residential development before you. Can you apply that design review standard that says this. Uh, development has to be consistent with the character of the community. Can you apply that standard?
If it was before two thousand twenty.
Yes.
But the, but the app, what we're talking about now is what is the state of the law at the time the application is put in? No?
No, it's, what, if we, if we say we want new design standards, they have to be, um.
We, we have to have made those new design standards three and a half years ago.
Yeah.
Right. Now, another hypothetical. Let's say the applicant is proposing. Two units. For development, two new units, and you have a, a subjective design standard like the one I articulated earlier. Can you apply it?
Two units puts it under HAA.
Yeah, they wouldn't be HCA. Yep.
Yeah.
Your pros. I'm gonna issue certificates after. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, restrictions, we're almost done here. Restrictions on development standards. Uh, you can no longer adopt any provisions that limit the number of entitlements. Cities did this, they limited annual entitlements. That's been scrapped, cap the number of housing units, been scrapped, and limit the population, also been scrapped. Cities used to do things like this, not anymore. Next. They, they, they try, they can't. Uh, no net loss of housing units. So the city cannot approve demolition of residential dwelling units unless the project creates at least as many residential dwelling units as demolished. So Commissioner Murphy, if I have an application. That, it's a, let's say it's a duplex. Uh, an existing duplex. But I purchased a property, and I want to build a single-family home for my family. Can I demolish that duplex and build a single-family home?
No.
You can't, because it's.
Two units.
Has to be a minimum of two units.
Right.
So you can build a single-family home in an ADU and you're okay, because it's built a minimum of two units. Or JADU, or JDU, which are pretty, they're pretty lenient standards, so you can, it'll look like a single-family home. Yeah, and there are more stringent requirements for protected units, and protected units include those that have affordability covenants, uh, rent restrictions, et cetera.
Is it possible?
What if it's affordable by being substandard?
No. Sub, substandard units are never protected. Substandard, if you're using the term as it's defined in the Health and Safety Code. Substandard units are never protected. That's a, that's a code enforcement action against that property owner, if we find out it's substandard.
Is substandard, um, an objective list of criteria to define it?
Yes, the Health and Safety Code defines exactly what substandard means, and if it's substandard, we, as a city. We didn't have it before, but today, as a city, we have a duty, an obligation, if we find out, to go in. And send that person notices and to begin correcting the substandard conditions.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, that's gonna be someone's busy.
Might have a much bigger job than we thought.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What you don't know.
Is that why you walk around with your hands over your ears?
Didn't hear it, I can't see it.
See, no.
Don't tell me.
So, I won't get into the, this, this is actually a pretty complex area of law, but there are tenant protections, so no evictions within six months before start of construction. Cause sometimes construction can take, uh, forever and. Um, they want to make sure that they give the tenant as much time as possible to inhabit the unit. Developer must provide relocation benefits and first right of refusal to those people who wanna, who've been displaced. Next slide. Ah, okay.
All right.
Let me. Yeah, this is, I'm gonna have to stand up for this. I need to explain this.
This is not complicated at all.
Looks like NCAA brackets.
So this is, this is one of the most complex things I've, I've had to do in my.
Try to, try to talk through that microphone.
This is among the more. Is it on? Yeah. Among the more complex things I've had to do, is try to synthesize all these laws and to understand how they interact with each other. So I'm, I'm going to go through the analysis that we go through when we, when we review development projects. I'm, I'm gonna step away here for a moment. You don't have a laser pointer, do you?
Well, even if I did, it wouldn't.
Yeah.
His finger.
I have a.
It's okay, I'll, I'll point to it, I'll point to it. Okay, so. You have a residential development application, that's what that first box says?
Yep.
So then we ask, how many units are we dealing with? We're dealing with one unit? Great, tell me the zone. Sorry, if it's one unit, it's, uh. This is, since it's a residential development application, it's gonna be, no questions asked, it has, one unit has to be a residential zone. There is no commercial zone, none of that, at all. So we skip the zone question. And we skip the affordability question, because if it's a, if it's one unit, it doesn't matter, affordable, not affordable, doesn't matter, it's gonna be same analysis. So then I ask, what type of development is it? Is it a single-family home? Or an ADU, or an SB nine unit? They're all different units. Density bonus, obviously not, because density bonus, you have to get five units or more to qualify for density bonus. Then I cite the statute, and then we ask, is a hearing permissible? And you can see, for an ADU, no hearings. SB nine, no hearing, the only hearing you get is for a single-family home. And when you get that hearing, your level of review, full discretion. For a single-family home, and that applies like, that applies to additions, that applies to modifications of the home, all that, demolitions. Yes.
Yep. I maybe should have asked this earlier, but back in the day, besides the planning commission, the city had. What was called an architectural review board. That looked at the goodness of design. That was merged with the planning commission, we got bigger, and then we got smaller again. But I think it's still part of our responsibility, but it doesn't sound objective at all.
Right.
It has to do with paint colors and the style of the house and, and all of those things. Are those all?
It's a thing of the past.
No longer allowed.
It's a thing of the past, except, I mean, except for.
I wanna build, I wanna build a big cube and paint it bright purple.
It's, it still applies, it still applies to your single-family homes and to your additions of your, on your homes. Those aren't protected by state law. State law is trying to facilitate the development of multiple units, so when you got one unit or you're making changes to your existing home. State law doesn't really care.
Okay.
So if you go to the next slide, I think, um, yeah, so I highlighted those.
Oh, yeah, look at that.
So if you go to the, the slide after, right.
Look at that.
Should have, I already had thought of this, I don't know why I made it complex. So, if it's not one unit, and it's multiple units. I ask, what zone is it in? If we're considering multiple units in a single-family zone, there are only three scenarios. Either we're dealing with a single-family home with an ADU, or JADU, we're dealing with an SB nine duplex. Or we're dealing with an SB nine, I put duplex there, but SB nine, well, actually, it could be. It could, it's an SB nine duplex and an ADU, right, so you could have three units.
SB nine, you're talking lot splits?
Uh, SB nine has two aspects, there's a duplex one, and then there's a lot split. Both of them are part of SB nine. Can you get a density bonus on any of these? No, cause you need a minimum of five units for density bonus, and you can never build. No state law currently allows you to build more than four, SB nine gives you up to four. But no state law gives you the authority to build more than four units in a single-family zone. So, you would never get density bonus, cause density bonus, you need five. And I cite the statutes, is a hearing permissible? Well, a hearing is permissible on the single-family home portion. Of the single-family ADU application, right? But really, what's the point of the hearing? The point of the hearing is, you're gonna be limited to the Housing Accountability Act standards, you're not gonna get the full discretion anymore. So you're gonna be subject to the HAA, and you can't even talk about the ADU unit, because that's staff level. The rest of them all handle to the staff level, you don't get review of that at all. Next slide. Now, if it's located in the commercial zone. There are two laws that allow development in the commercial zone. First is SB six, and the other is AB twenty eleven. Do you get density bonus on either of those? Yes. Uh, I cite the statutes, is a hearing permissible on both of those? Yes. But you have very limited discretion. SB six, subject to Housing Accountability Act standards of review. So if we're dealing with market rate units in the commercial zone, you can only deny if. There are specific adverse findings that are not, uh, you can't mitigate them. For AB twenty eleven projects, these things look like SB thirty-five projects. Affordable units, really strict standards, prevailing wage, all that stuff. Ministerial review, you don't even review that. Imagine, you can get a, an affordable housing development in a commercial zone. And the planning commission would never see it, it's all approved at staff level. Pretty remarkable. Uh, multifamily. So, if you have multiple units in the multifamily zone, which is where you'd expect to have them. Next question I always ask myself is, is it market rate or affordable? If it's market rate, is it an AB eight oh three, which I'm not gonna get into? If it's market rate, just know, you're limited to the Housing Accountability Act review. Is it, are there specific adverse findings? If it's, if it meets all objective standards. Are there specific adverse findings we can make, and if so, can those be mitigated? If it's affordable, we ask, is it an SB thirty-five project? If it is, no sequin, nothing, we go straight to ministerial review, approved at the staff level. If the SB thirty-five project. If it's not an SB thirty-five project. Um, then, do they get a density bonus? Uh, yes, they probably will, if they meet the thresholds. Is a hearing permissible? Yes. But they have, but you have limited discretion under the Housing Accountability Act. So if you, can you click on the next slide? I wonder if I have all of them all together. Oh, so can you go back all the way to the initial chart? So, to wrap this all up. In the olden days. Everything in this column was full discretion. Now.
Not much of it.
Only the top one. Of all of these, of all these squares in the column, the only top one, you have full discretion. And to, so to wrap your head around it, this is the, this is the change in state law. You've been, you've been deprived of full, you've been deprived of full discretion on every type of project except. Single-family homes and, you know, modifications to homes.
Everything else, it's limited or no discretion.
Correct.
I wouldn't wanna take a test on this. Don't ask any questions.
That is a great slide, though, that.
That is.
Yeah, it is.
Awesome. It's very cool.
Any questions for me? Sorry, I know I overwhelmed you all, this is a lot.
This, this is like a whole semester.
Yeah, and this is all based on, this is all based on current law that exists today. So if a new application came in today, this would apply.
Right.
It will apply until the governor signs some new housing law.
Yeah, until it gets amended.
Yeah, this, this is accurate as of January first, twenty twenty-three, and then twenty twenty-four, January first, I'll have to update this, maybe.
And this only applies to applications that have been submitted after January twenty twenty-three.
Uh, well, I mean, some of these laws existed before January first, twenty twenty, but I'm saying this slide is accurate as of January first, twenty twenty-three.
Got it.
It incorporates all the laws that took effect January twenty twenty-three. Some of them are new.
How, how long did it take you to adjust in Sierra Madre? Um, and, and do the work necessary to get, bring everything into conformance. So that you can operate under this.
Uh, hon- honestly, it took, it didn't take that much time. It took a year, and I'll tell you why. We actually were ahead of the curve a little bit. The, the city council decided to. Uh, take a lot of the decision-making authority away from the, uh, planning commission and gave it to the director. And it just so happened that when the city council did that, it aligned pretty well with the changes that were happening under state law. So, now the, the, the city, the planning commission is basically considering. Only projects that are. Uh, only projects that are. Single-family homes or additions, or demolition permits, stuff like that. So the, the planning commission's. Scope of, for considering projects is a lot less than it used to be, but that was, that happened at the city council level. Really before a lot of these laws took effect, at the, around the same time. But that was a city council decision, that, that doesn't reflect how, you know, Ojai works differently than Sierra Madre.
What's the population of Sierra Madre?
Eleven thousand. Pretty similar to Ojai, mountain, mountainside community, affluent.
You guys have any skyscrapers yet?
Nothing, no, no. You been? It's actually, it's actually really similar to Ojai.
I remember on my first day as a commissioner, turning to our chairman and saying, how many new houses get built? Per year in Ojai? He said, I think about one. On average. So, okay.
Yeah, there's some open space on Daly, though, that could be multifamily. Or could be lot split in a number of ways to add considerably more. I, I happen to walk up there a lot.
Yeah, I'm just saying, what, how many on average?
Actually done.
Or actually done, it's, it's tiny, yeah.
Okay, Alex, thank you.
Yeah.
Public comment, yep.
Once our presentation is done, and we're all finished with questions, if we are. Questions of staff, you're part of staff tonight. All right, then we will open a public comment portion of this discussion item. And I have two cards. First, Bill Miley.
Hi, um, this is a question for Alex. It's a two-part question. If a city has met its rena numbers for affordable units. And a new proposal comes along. It's submitted. Can the city deny it because they've already met their rena numbers for cycle six? And the second part is. If a city's housing element, this part that states the needs for affordable housing. In its population, and they're much larger than the rena numbers assigned to the city. Can the developer use that need statement to request approval? Or can a city use its? Or can a city use its RENA fulfillment to deny the project because it's no longer needed to fill the RENA assignment numbers? Is that pretty clear?
May I answer, sir? Uh, I, I, I want to make sure I got the facts right, sir. So in the first, in the first hypothetical you gave me, you said, if the city has met its requirement, has satisfied its requirement for affordable units, right?
Yes.
Can it then deny a project because it's met its affordable units?
Yes, that's what I'm asking.
So, uh, under, under the Housing Accountability Act standards for reviewing affordable projects, uh, I believe it was on the slide, one of the, one of the reasons why you can deny a project that's an affordable project is if you've met, uh, your RENA numbers for your different, uh, income levels. So I think the answer would be probably yes.
Can you define met? What does met your RENA number mean?
Uh, well, your, your RENA allocation will say you need to have a sufficient number in this income category, sufficient number in that income category, and a sufficient number in that. So if you've satisfied all of those, then, yeah.
But, but, but. Does it, is it like approved as like there's availability, but it hasn't been built yet?
No, must be, it has to be built. And, and, and the way.
City hasn't met its RENA numbers until a certain number of housing units are built?
Yeah, it's actually not built. I think it's, uh, I think it's building permits issued or entitlements issued. I don't exactly know, uh, how HCD is counting it, but, but HCD has, I mean, your city staff has the list and HCD has a list. And we compile that, like I said, every single year on April first, we submit that list of how many units we've entitled toward those goals, toward, toward those RENA goals.
Yeah, the APR is a little bit different than it was in previous years. I think two thousand nineteen, maybe twenty twenty is when it shifted to a three-category system, which is applications submitted, um, projects approved, and then projects finalled. Before, it was just simply projects that had been, um, approved. Didn't matter if they had been submitted, didn't matter if they had been built.
But, okay, let's say that the city has set aside, uh, by appropriate zoning or whatever, sufficient land to build as, as many housing units of various categories of affordability are required by the RENA numbers. But no one has applied to build any of those. The city has failed to meet its number?
For purposes of the Housing Accountability Act? Yes. For purposes of the housing element law? No. Did I confuse you?
Okay, no, I understand that. Okay, two different pieces of the law. But what happens under the Housing Accountability Act? If nobody applies to build any affordable housing, what does the state do to the city?
Nothing. But if an applicant comes along and says, hey, I'm here now and I want to build affordable units?
Okay, then they get fast-tracked or whatever.
Yeah, you can't, you can't deny it for the, for that reason.
Okay, but you're not, you're not failing if nobody asked to build anything.
Correct.
Okay.
The, your, your second question, I wanted to make sure I captured it. It was, can you give me the second question again? Sorry.
Second question is, in the approved housing element for cycle six, the statement of need in the community shows that the number of residents in the city of Ojai that are, in this case, rent burden thirty percent more is much more than the RENA numbers. Can a developer come along and say, I want to meet that need, even though you've met your RENA numbers? And is there any force that that statement in the housing element has to get the approval for the project?
Yeah, that's a tough one because I've never seen this hypo. You're saying that we've, the city has met its RENA numbers, and when you say it's met it, what you're, I think what you're saying is that the city has entitled sufficient units in the different income categories, correct? And so, but even after that, there's still a large group of people who are rent burdened.
And it's represented in the approved housing element, showing that.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I don't know what happens in that scenario. I'd have to do some research.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Brian Atkins? Atkins? Sir?
Hello there. So again, Alex, I'm Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission, and I think you were a voice coming at us in some of our meetings back in early COVID days.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So a, a discussion that took place when these edicts from Sacramento started floating down and showing up in the paper was historic districts. Uh, currently, we're on a project and looking at it at downtown historic district that preceded the edicts that were coming down south. But in, and, and I just got the same question from one of my commissioners, uh, to ask the question. So what I saw in, in looking at, at that, excuse me, was too, too many hours sitting here this, in the last week. Was that a, a number of smaller communities throughout the state, uh, were, uh, adopting historic districts and using those as a protection for, um, these new edicts. And one of the arguments, you know, and that came up in our meeting, one of the arguments was, well, you know, it's commercial, nobody's ever going to build downtown anyway. Well, now we know that's not true anymore. The other thing, someone jokingly came up to me and said, currently, we have one historic district, a community that's, uh, uh, our city historic district, again, been, been here for years, long before this. But the joke was, uh, well, maybe we need to make the Arbolata a historic district. Because again, an area that has a, a history, this is put by someone else. I don't want to be in the paper tomorrow. This, uh, this is something, again, that was put out because it is a historically set aside area that has i- its own kind of guidelines that have varied over the years. But, so my question is, you, you never mentioned historic districts and how they are now treated. Are they treated with any kind of special protection that goes with, along with what you've been, uh, telling us, which is why I will never become a planning commissioner. Thank you.
I, I, I have a question about your historic districts. Are these, are these local designations or are they on some state list?
Okay, so, so two things. The, the one district we have is a locally designated, uh, historic district. However, uh, we, we have a project that's, uh, started through, coming through town, uh, I think the fall of twenty seventeen, uh, Alternative Transportation Project, which is a Caltrans project. They actually came to the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission in the fall of, uh, twenty, twenty seventeen and said, hey, uh, we're going to be in town, we're going to be looking at your historic curbs, gutters, and sidewalks, to which we said, cool, good luck. And, and then there was a, uh, there was a period of time we were expecting some kind of report, no report came. We were about to meet on our own, uh, efforts on a downtown historic district. And lo and behold, we find out that two years prior to that, there was a re, fine report that was done by Caltrans. Because they were, and once that report was done, they were required to give it to the historic people in the state. And at that time, again, two years before, but no one had seen that report, uh, Ojai actually became a state dis, the downtown Ojai, a state designated historic district. Again, designated by the state. That, that assignment, that recognition has never been, uh, accepted by the city council. So we have that quandary too. So to answer your question, complicated.
Yeah, yeah, it is complicated. So I can't answer, obviously, with, with respect to specific projects because.
Of course, of course.
Um, gen, now, I'm speaking generally. Generally speaking, if the historic designation is on some state or federal list, uh, you can expect a significant degree of protection for whatever that designated property is. If it's locally designated, uh, it will be difficult for you to get any kind of protections for that because the state law is somewhat disregarding a lot of our local designations.
Okay. Okay, so they, so essentially, the, the, the rules caught up with the, uh, let's make it all of ourselves a downtown his, or a historic district to protect ourselves.
I can think of two examples where cities have recently done that in the, in the recent past. And the attorney general weighed in again and, and sent them, uh, mean letters. And they, and they, and they reconsidered their historic designation.
Okay.
Their local designation.
Okay.
I have a, I have a question, Brian.
Yes.
Um, are you saying that this Caltrans des, it was a Caltrans designation of a historic district?
So again, Caltrans requested because of the, uh, they, they came into town, they said, oh yeah, this looks historic, we're going to do this, uh, I think one hundred and forty-two page report. And so they went through and designated everything. They, by law, and, and Lucas can correct me because he's been involved all the way through, once they did that, Caltrans did that report, they had to turn that report over to the state historic resources people. Once they looked at that report, they said, okay, Ojai, your downtown is now a state historic.
What year was that?
Commissioners, I just, I just want to encourage us not to talk about things that aren't on the agenda in this. We're kind of moving off of what's been agendized. Apologies.
I'm sorry. And we do have landmarked properties, but that was not part of what we talked about tonight, so.
Sorry.
You're done? Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Is that enough? I, I do want to get a copy of the charts.
Yeah.
I, I do too.
Especially that last one, which we're all going to have to memorize.
And, and you said that you can make it available on the website as well, the, the city website?
Uh, this is not something Alex will be making. It's something that certainly I can, I can make available, absolutely.
Could you have the last one down on a big sheet of paper? So the type sizes.
Much larger than eleven by seventeen, yes.
Terrific.
Okay.
Okay, let's go on then to item two, future agenda items.
All right, so we've got our next meeting, which is scheduled for October eighteenth. Um, there are two items that we just sent out notice to the paper for, so both of these are public hearing items. Five oh nine South Ventura Street as well as seven oh six Libby. The third thing on here is the housing element from a program prioritization. We had talked about.
Oh, yeah.
Actually having that discussion at this meeting. I will admit, I was sick leading into the, to the discussion of putting something together and it just, I just ran out of time. So we'll do that for the eighteenth and then, um, and then lead into November first, which is going to be, that's where we're trending with the Cabrillo project, which is three eighteen, three twenty Bryant Street. It's a vacant parcel. We all know where it's at.
Yep.
Yep. Pending projects, I see three down here, including, yes, twelve oh two East Ojai Avenue, as well as fourteen forty Daly and three sixty East Ojai. These are all trending towards being scheduled in the near term. And I, I don't, I wouldn't put specific weight on any of these three. I think they're all kind of in equal court right now. So there's other ones out there, obviously, but not to the degree that these three are, so.
Five oh nine, South Ventura. That's south of Santa, that's, it's south of us here.
Um, five oh nine, south.
Because the city hall is four eleven or four oh one or something.
Well.
Or that's, oh, that's Santa Ana.
That's Santa Ana, you're right. Um, I'm just trying to remember where this is at.
Five oh nine, South Ventura, well, all right. Google Maps will tell me where it is.
Yes.
So we'll have.
So that's, that's what we've got for the agenda for the next month. I can just tell you right now that I don't, I don't see us canceling any meetings in the, in the near term. We don't necessarily have a logjam like I've talked about before. We're, we're seeing projects come forward in time, so.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Then, directors report?
Um, nothing to report specifically. I will say this. In the upcoming city council, um, meeting, we've got two, uh, two items that are, are coming up that are on, that are second reads. Two items that this body has already seen. So Title ten.
The Title ten corrections?
Yeah, Title ten is the first one, and then the second one is, um, STRs, the short-term rental stuff.
Lucas, were you going to talk about the appeal?
Uh, not really, but I guess I can now.
No, you don't have to.
Okay.
Was that the voice of God?
Yes, apparently. Uh, there has been an appeal that's been filed, and it was filed yesterday, and that is the appeal of this body, um, regarding uh, reach codes essentially. So that'll be coming before the city council sometime in the near future.
Okay. Any commissioner members with something to report?
No.
Our city council liaison.
Well, I just want to thank, yes, I know, endurance test tonight. Um, Alex, thank you so much. Great to meet you, and that was a really informative and, uh, all-encompassing report, so thank you.
Mention exhausting, yeah.
Exhausting, yes. And it always makes me feel better when Chair Quilisi says that you're confused because that means we all can be confused, right? And I agree with you, Commissioner Murphy, uh, I don't want to take a test on this either. So I do, would like to see a copy of that because there's so much information. Lucas, thank you so much for all of your work on this and, um, the quote that you said that really stuck with me, the laws are written in favor of developers, clearly, and, um, corporate real estate interests. And so I really thank the commission so much for working on this because clearly we all know that we need homes for very low, acutely low, extremely low-income households, which are two categories that didn't even make the charts. Extremely low, acutely low, just not there. So we all know that that's what we need. So I really appreciate your focus on that and, uh, just the minutia and the details. This is so much work, so I salute you all and I'm just grateful for your service because this is certainly not easy. And, um, you know, and what you said about, uh, front-ending, you know, our strength is in the front end, working on our general plan, so I really look forward to working on that with all of you and, um, it is a brave new world, so thank you all for your work here and, um, just attention to detail because it's, it's a lot to know and, um, and great role-playing too. That was really fun. Good to see. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
A question?
Yes.
Um, you know, the, the planning commission has two committees right now, one on housing. These two, I think, no, these two? And one on parking, which is just me right now. And I haven't met with myself because I was invited to a parking committee meeting that was a city council ad hoc committee. Uh, that was some, many months ago now, and I don't know if it just hasn't met again or it's met, but I was not told about it or, or what, I don't know. Would you happen to know if that ad hoc parking committee has met again?
Not that I know of, I, I can find out and I will definitely get back.
But that's, that was Souza and Rachel?
Right, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you all. Thanks so much.
And now, there being no obvious other business before the commission, at eight fifty, we are adjourned.